Hey, thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate everybody being here. We've got a lot on the agenda. We have asked, let me just do a roll call here to make sure we know everybody's here for the record. We have Councilmember Varell, Councilmember Tafoya, Councilmember Yeoman, Councilmember Paul, and Councilmember Saxton with us tonight. So we're excited to have everybody here. We've asked Councilmember Saxton if he'll be with us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian?
Please, if I may, would you just give us a moment? Thanks. If you'd please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Council, we have some consent items. We just need to walk through the appointment, excuse me, the approval of June 4th, June 18th, City Council Meeting Minutes, and the reappointment of the Planning Commissioners. We have two Planning Commissioners that need be or could be, should be reappointed. We also have consideration or request for preliminary subdivision approval of the Rockwell Subdivision for properties located approximately 2792 West, 4000 South. Council, any comments on those before we vote? Okay, do I have a motion then to approve the council, excuse me, the consent items?
We do need to make an amendment to the June 4th minutes.
Okay.
If you can just make mention of that in the motion.
So should we exclude that one, or is it?
No, it's just, I just need to change one word.
Okay. Then, we know with that, with the change of that word, then we'll approve, okay? Do I have a motion then to approve with the change in word?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the consent items as follows, and with also the change in the wording of the June 4th Council Minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All approved. We have some presentations tonight, Employee of the Month, June and July. Matt?
You want to?
Okay, Camille, thank you.
Mayor and Council, it is a pleasure to be with you this evening to present the June Employee of the Month Award to Cassie Barlow. Cassie is the city's accounting technician and accounts payable clerk, and I received the following memo from the Police Department from MABI that I would like to share. Just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate Cassie Barlow's help in the Police Department. Cassie's hard work and dedication to Roy City and accounts payable is commendable. She has shown extreme commitment and resolve, ensuring the city is receiving the assistance they deserve. There are many times we have needed Cassie's knowledge and expertise regarding purchasing, whether she is at work or off, Cassie is always there to assist. Her expertise regarding the purchasing policy, accounts, and budgeting are exceptional. Her care for our vendors and employees goes above and beyond the duty of her job. She is truly an asset to Roy City and should be recognized for her hard work and dedication. And to that, I would like to add that Cassie is an excellent resource for all the departments in the city and never hesitates to help with any special projects. She's very knowledgeable in the city policies and her attention to detail has provided a valuable resource in verifying the payments the city is making are accurate and appropriate. She is extremely organized, especially at maintaining POs, records, vehicle titles, and credit cards. She provides assistance to departments when they sell a fixed asset or purchase one, and she tracks the city's unclaimed property and makes sure that we send that to the state in a timely manner every year. She provides excellent customer service to all departments and maintains a great working relationship with them, and they look to Cassie as a subject matter expert and rely on her knowledge and dedication to the city to find a resolution when they have questions or concerns. So it is an honor to present the June Employee of the Month to Cassie Barlow.
I was told I have to change your hat. I'll take your hat, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, so good.
Okay, Council, comments?
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Casey, wonderful, okay? Excellent service, and we couldn't be more pleased, and it's always great to hear those kinds of comments coming from, from the people that you work with, okay? That's really a great thing. So welcome, thank you, and you surely deserve it. Any other comments, Council?
No, I'm glad that she's actually a resource throughout the city, not just in her department that a lot of other departments rely on, her, you know, her expertise and stuff in areas, so that's great.
Okay. Okay, July?
So Council, I also get the pleasure of presenting the July Employee of the Month as well. So the July Employee of the Month Award is going to Tanya Littlefield. Tanya is the finance clerk for the city and takes care of all of our payroll. Tanya was recently instrumental in a successful Utah Retirement System audit of the city. They come out and audit the city every few years. They said that this recent audit ran smoothly in large part due to Tanya's management of the payroll system and her ability to provide accurate information. They also commented multiple times that they were very appreciative of her role in this audit and that they had expected the audit to be cumbersome and take a lot of time, but they ended up doing all of this fieldwork in a day when they came out because Tanya had everything so well prepared. Tanya processes the city's biweekly payroll very timely and accurately. Any changes requested by employees are processed quickly and efficiently and ensure they're reflected on the following payroll. Her attention to detail is an asset to the city in providing accurate payroll information and reports. She is very knowledgeable in the Ciselle Financial Software System and excels at running reports and provides information to all of the departments as requested. And annual U2s are always completed well before the IRS deadlines. She's willing to help cover wherever she is needed in our department. She is always the first to help answer phones if the utility department is busy or to help with employee orientations during the hiring season. Various employees have told me she's knowledgeable and willing to help explain things to them. The employee who recommended her for Employee of the Month is in a different department, and they know they can rely on her for accurate information and that she'll process the changes to their payroll quickly and accurately. She's dedicated to making sure payroll is always correct and that employees are paid on time, and she is extremely dedicated to Roy City in general and always volunteers to help with anything. So it is a pleasure to get to present Tanya with the July Employee of the Month.
Council, comments?
Again, another well-rounded employee that we have in the city that is actually a good resource for other departments again. That is great when we're able to use everybody's expertise in actually running our city. So congratulations to all of those employees that have got the Employee of the Month.
Well said. Thank you.
Appreciate your service. That's awesome.
Perfect. Okay, we have a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club. John, are you going to do the presentation? Welcome back, John. It's great to see you again.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, staff, we, the Boys and Girls Club, we just want to thank you for the years of support. It's a great service that we give to our kids. You're a part of it. Thank you very much. I'm going to pass it right on to our president here.
Thank you. Kimberly Green, board chair for Boys and Girls Club. Thank you for giving us more time on your agenda. I know we were here a month or two ago to have some celebrations. We are excited to announce some changes recently at the club. We were charged with selecting a new leader for the Boys and Girls Club of Weaver Davis, and I'm sure you know what a challenge it is to find good leaders, and we are so very excited to introduce to you today our new leader. I'm sure many of you are familiar with him, so I'll invite James to come up while I talk about him and his favorite thing. This is our second time of doing presentations together today. James Evert is a man of service. He spent many decades serving on Riverdale City Police Department and carried on that through the Weaver County Commissioners recently. And on behalf of the Board of the Boys and Girls Club, it is such a unique honor, and we are very lucky to have him join, that has that life of service combined with business acumen. And I'm sure that you know, if you're familiar with nonprofits, you have to do a lot with very little, and James has been hitting the ground running since he first walked in the door. I don't think he's stopped. He's probably not going to stop. So we were just very excited and wanted to include you in this process and give you some time to speak. So thank you very much. With that, I'll turn it over to James.
Thank you. I'm just wondering when our recess will be. I'm an ex politician, so I have about a 45-minute presentation, mostly about myself. It's a unique privilege that I have to be the Executive Director and to work with an amazing Board and work within these amazing communities. I was fortunate enough to retire from law enforcement, and so I was kind of sitting around wondering what I'm going to do for the next 30 years of my life, and this opportunity came along, and I just couldn't resist putting in for it, and I was fortunate to be appointed. I spent four years of my life, in the last four years, working on intergenerational poverty, establishing what the needs were and identifying the data and connecting opportunities. Remember, I feel like I really accomplished what I've accomplished in the last four weeks just working with these kids as boots on the ground and watching them learn things and participate and learn how to deal with conflict and learn accountability, but also learn social skills, and that was just my board. But I want to tell you, we truly appreciate the partnership we have with Roy. As one of the founding members of the Boys and Girls Club here in Weaver and Davis, it would not happen without you, and this is our flagship site. There are so many things that happen in that facility. We continue to invite you to come down and participate and be part of it. We'd love to work with our law enforcement partners to have that relationship built with the youth and law enforcement. We'd love, if you have extra bicycles, we have a program where we can bring, you know, the kids into a bicycle repair program, and we can teach these kids a appreciable skill. We'd love to partner with Roy City on building some garden boxes for the kids so that they can learn some gardening skills and watch that cycle of growth and of life that you experience when you farm things. And these are the things we're teaching these kids. So on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, I want to express again our appreciation to Roy City, to the law enforcement community, and then to each of you individually in the community as a whole for your support, and we look forward to a continued long relationship. And again, I want to express my appreciation to the Board for allowing me to have the privilege of doing this wonderful and amazing job. So thank you very much.
May I pop up? I'll speak in a really loud voice. I'm Kimmy Hall. I live in Roy. I love Roy. I am so grateful for the City Council and the Mayor of Roy in the past, and some of you are still here, that helped in the building of the Hope Center. What an incredible building, what an incredible opportunity for our seniors, for our youth, and for our community. And we have these darling children here that will all want to stand up with their leaders and our Board and say thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Evert, can I ask one of the kids a question? A couple of them? I'll ask Matt, because I know his name now. Matt, what's the best part about being at the club?
I don't know. Like, I'll walk him up to the club, just having a bad day, and then the kids all run up to me, and it just kind of makes everything better.
So we have an employed youth, that's important. How about one of our, one of our young people? Can I ask one of them?
Oh, really? No.
Oh, there we go. We got a volunteer. Tell me your name, sir.
Cash.
Cash, what's your favorite part about being at the club?
I like playing at the playground.
Of course, all right. So you get to be with a lot of friends, right? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, excellent, and great comments. Mr. Evert, appreciate your input. Congratulations on your, on your assignment. This is going to be exciting to work with you, and on behalf of the Roy City, we're committed to the Boys and Girls Club and our community, and what we can do to help to make it successful, even more successful, is please call upon us, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well done. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I-15 UDOT, you're going to help us tonight. Perfect. Presentation on the board. That's excellent.
Hey, thank you for letting us come. I'm Brett Slater. I'm the project manager with UDOT for this project. I think we've talked about this once before, but it's been probably a couple of years since I presented on this project. I'm going to give you an overview of it. This is the I-15 Express Lane Project from Leighton to Riverdale. What we're doing is, is we're extending the express lanes, so we're going to pick up where they end in Leighton, and then we're going to carry them all the way up to Riverdale. This is what this project is. So in a sense, we're actually going to be kind of closing the gap or filling in the median for, for the most part of this project. Some of the major items of this project are we're going to be replacing two bridges, and we're going to be putting new decks on five others. In the Roy area in particular, we'll be doing the 5600 bridge, putting a new deck on it, and widening, and widening that bridge to the middle. And we'll also be putting a new deck on the railroad bridge and widening it to the middle. So those are the two major items that are going in Roy. Other major improvements in the area that will help with traffic flow, we'll be doing ramp meters on all the on-ramps. We are doing some work to the off-ramp, the 5600 north, or southbound off-ramp. That should help with some of the stacking we're seeing. We're also doing improvements to the southbound on-ramp. It's a difficult on-ramp, especially where you're trying to climb to get over the railroad bridge. There's not much we can do with that spacing. You can't move the railroad bridge. If you're trying to climb, what you can do is add an additional lane ramp, and extend that ramp is what we're doing. So we're not trying to, we're not going to force the truck traffic or the cars to merge into I-15 as quickly. Those two improvements should actually, should really help the commuters, especially through the Roy area. We're also going to add a second off-ramp out on northbound I-15 at Riverdale Road. That will also help with the congestion here a little bit. Those are some of the major improvements that we're doing. We've selected, the contractor that won the bid is Route L. Watts, or R.L.W. You'll be seeing, so some of the work activities you'll be seeing is, and you're already seeing it now, they're out there every night. It's because of some of our lane restrictions that we have in place. One of the requirements for the contractor was the contractor had to maintain three lanes during basically daylight hours, peak hour traffic. And so we defined peak hours starting at 7:00 in the morning, or by 6:00 in the morning, all the way until 9:00 at night. During those hours, the contractor could not take a lane. But what you're going to see is reduced lanes, and you're going to see that we've already, we're beginning to shove traffic over to the outside shoulders now. And then on the 27th of July, we will enter into our first crossover configuration here in the Roy area for the southbound direction. What a crossover is, is we're going to take one lane of traffic in the opposite direction, and we're going to move them over onto the other side of the road. That's why it's now called a crossover. They'll be placed in the barrier situation, so they're, so they're protected, but it's kind of like a luge, but so, and they'll be in that configuration all the way until we get into the winter months. And then we're hoping that the bridge work and the work that they are trying to do will be completed enough that we can put traffic back into a normal configuration during, during snow weather and snow flights. That's our hope. There is a chance that, that we will carry that crossover through this first winter season.
So probably, sorry to interrupt, so probably then during that time with the crossover and those lanes being restricted, probably best maybe to go into further down south to connect to I-15, maybe to maybe avoid that and add congestion into that area?
How, when does it start and when is it in on the cross lane?
So the crossover will be, the crossover is being put into place on July 27.
Location.
And it starts, and the location is, is right there by Riverdale, is where you're going to enter into the crossover for southbound, and you'll come out of that 650 north, right before 650. So this one is, this crossover is so they can work on the railroad and 5600. That's why that one is going in place. There's another crossover going in place further south, and that's so they can work on 200 south. And so there's, there's going to be two different crossovers, there are different locations in it for different traffic. This one is affecting southbound. The other one's going to affect more, affect northbound.
And is it only taking, did I hear you say only one lane?
Yes.
So like the fast lanes crossing over?
Yes.
Okay, so then congestion might not be too bad. And usually your crossovers, I mean, you've been doing this on I-15 for quite a while, so we're all used to probably this construction. I just didn't know if this was something that is needed to be added into our monthly bulletin?
Absolutely.
Newsletter so that our citizens know when that crossover's starting and how long it's going to be to maybe, you know, if they can't avoid it, to add or, you know, just get some of the information out.
Yeah, we have put it in the newsletter before, and then we also post quite frequently on Facebook as well.
Okay, perfect. So we're on top of that.
Yes, and our, I think that's working very well with Matt. They, so we have a website for the project. We're posting quite frequently. We have maps of, and we're actually putting together an animation of what this crossover will look like.
Oh, that's cool.
Even though people have seen this before, it's just so they can have a better little understanding of what it will, or how it'll look like for this area particularly.
Do you want to point out that at 650, if people can access, can access 650 or 500?
Yes, so we're not closing the hill, you're at the, not closing the hill gate at 650. You still can access it there, and you still can access the hill at 5600. You can see that we've already put them in a crossover here. We've already done some chain, lane configuration changing at 5600. That one we will remain in place until we can get the parapets and the new bridges built there that are, that's closing that gap. That's really, the project is, is large, it's complicated, it's moving a little bit slower than we wanted, but in a nutshell, it's kind of simple. It's, it's pretty linear, and most of it's going to the median, as you can see what's going in there. Some of the big things we kind of want to emphasize with the, with the Council and the Mayor and, and the city is, is we have a website. We do, we're sending out text alerts, so if there's major traffic incidents, we, we're sending out texts so people can avoid that area. It's working. We had a wreck out here, actually, we have a number, we've had a number of wrecks since we started construction, but just recently we had one that's, a pretty good one that was at 650 north blocking. It was pushing traffic all the way almost back in past Riverdale is, is the slowdown. The text went out, people, if they, you've seen it, if you have time to respond to it, then you could jump on 1900, you could completely avoid the area. You could jump on I-84 and work your way around that way. We are also, we've also put up traffic sensors as part of this project on I-15, I-84, and US-89. So we are, we are collecting real-time data for, for the, for the traffic patterns out there, and it'll be on our website shortly, where someone can jump on and see which is the fastest route. Should I take, should I take Farmington and go up 89 and come down and around to completely avoid this area, or should I just go on through it? And it should be able to tell you exactly how long it will take you either route, and that should be out pretty quick.
And people can access this?
So, and, and all that information is available on our website, and if you join, if you come into our website, it's going to give you a notification if you want to sign up for text alerts or, so that is a kind of site of that. We want to, so we really want to get that information out there so we can help people avoid this area and possible. The lanes will be narrow, especially when we start working on 5600, the lanes are actually going to go down to, at a pinch point, to 10 and a half foot lanes at that app, just one critical location. Everywhere else, the lanes are 11 foot. Normal lanes on the freeway are 12 foot lanes, so you can see we are inching down pretty tight. And you can actually see that, that congestion has actually been getting a little bit worse in the southbound direction. It's, our PM peaks are, are starting earlier and are lasting longer. I'm not really sure why that's happening right now, whether they're trying to look to see what's happening with the construction, whether they're gazing a little bit, but we're actually noticing that. Over the last two weeks, we've been seeing that slowdown's taking place a little bit quicker.
I like the fact you put up the front runner picture, because it just promotes, hey, try a different mode of mass transit. Maybe try the front runner going down to Salt Lake instead of driving I-15.
Yep, there's, there's definitely options available to people. And that's about it. Do you guys, do you have any questions for us?
What's the target completion date?
Two years.
Two years.
Right now, our goal's to be done, it's looking like it's probably going to be November of 2020. That's, that's what R.L.W. did. Our engineers estimate, when we put our bid together, was a three-season project, so it's, it'll be interesting to see if he can get that work done in two seasons.
Then another related question, the 1800 north, when is that scheduled to be made?
Okay, so the 1800 north project, the new interchange that you're referring to there is, they, they have funded that project. That money was funded in the year 2024. The reason it was pushed out to the year 2024 is because there's some work that has to take place prior to the, before it can do anything. With, so there's an environmental document that was completed in 2000, I don't dare tell you the year. It's been a little bit, about five years ago, '15. But with that document, you had a, you had to choose an alternate that avoided certain resources. Up on the, up on the Hill Air Force Base, there's an Army rail shop. There's only one in the nation. At that rail shop, they refurbished locomotives. That rail shop is slated to be moved, and I think it's being moved in 2021. Once that rail shop has been moved and the buildings have been taken down, then UDOT can come in and we can reevaluate our environmental document, which changes our preferred alternative. So our preferred alternative is still a Spooey, a Spooey interchange, a single-point urban interchange at that location, but what it's going to change is how it is configured. And most likely, the freeway will be moved over to the east and placed on top of where that rail shop is currently located, which is, is good for the Army, it's good for, it's good for a lot of entities. And also, it's going to open up some ground for MIDA to redevelop where the current freeway is sitting. So there's a lot of things that needs to take place. That's why it's in 2024. The environmental document most likely will get reopened in 2022. But just so the Council knows, the only, only the interchange was funded. 1800 north, the road widening from SR-126 or 1900 west down to 2000 west in Clinton has not been funded yet. So you're going to open up an interchange and send a lot of cars down a very small road. So that needs to be addressed, and that's something that, that my precious Dave, that statement from Matt, should be petitioned as frequently and often, that that portion of that project needs to be funded at the same time, needs to be built with the interchange.
So we're looking at a two-year process, and so sometime between now and next two years, we should have completion of the express lanes going north and south on I-15.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, Council, other questions, comments?
Well, that was great information. So just as long as our staff has got all the information to be able to update our citizens, so that's great.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Matt, I think the takeaway from that would be is that we can keep our residents informed by using the magazine and other mediums. If you can help us do that, that's perfect. I know we've been doing that, we just have to down top of that. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Council, we have some action items, specifically a public hearing to consider ordinance 19-9. Council, do you have a motion to go into public hearing to deal with ordinance 19-9 as amending the zoning map from light manufacturing to RE-20, residential estates? as he mending the zoning map from light manufacturing to RE-20, residential estates? So, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in a public hearing, let's begin the discussion. Steve, if you'd like to introduce it, then we'll ask for public input.
I'm going to mention this is just a request to amend the zoning map from light manufacturing to RE-20, there on properties on 2700 west, about 51, 49 south. I'm just using an aerial, which kind of the properties, there are five of them, that are looking to, to be changed. There on 5200 south, in the corner, you've got a storage unit, they'll stay light manufacturing, then you have three single-family homes in between, then to the north, you have, I can't remember what partner business it is, but again, another light manufacturing business, then two homes. So the north of that last home, this property came in, I'd probably say three or so years ago to be rezoned to RE-20, so that these will just kind of conform with it. What brought it in is the gentleman, Jim Packer, wants to build a garage on his, for his home, but the issue comes, is these light manufacturing, single-family homes are non-conforming, ordinance does not allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use. So when I sat down and talked with them, I, our options are rezone or don't build your garage. It didn't make sense not to build it, he wants to improve his property, and then I asked him to go talk to his neighbors, let's bring in more properties of the same issues into this, into this rezone, so he's, he's got four others that would like to come with him and rezon it. Again, just future land use map, the light yellow that's kind of on there, our future land use map has this whole area to be low-density, RE-20, and then when you look at the zoning map, there's a huge difference between this, so these five properties will just bring this area more into compliance with what we are desiring. Planning Commission did have a public hearing last week on July 9th, four people that spoke, you have within your staff report, most of them were, again, more concerns of, excuse me, grandfathering rights for animals, I told them the RE-20 allows for animals, so it's a permitted rather than grandfathered, so we don't lose any rights. And things change, again, how it would affect their properties, they'll be able to expand their homes, add garages, and so on and so forth. So, I vote the Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval of the change.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, if you'd like to, please come up to the microphone, and if you have some comments or thoughts, just give us your name and your home address, or your address. Okay, seeing none. Council, I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, we're out of a public hearing, council, comments?
I just feel that this actually just protects the property, like you said, it gives them the ability to be able to expand and improve on their property, it just conforms the rest of the things in that area. I mean, when the zoning map and future land use map was done many years ago, I mean, it didn't really, you're trying to predict what the future's going to be, and you would think it would be a good area to be able to put some of the light manufacturing, but since the 10, 15 years since that was done, none of that's come to play, so just looking at the future of this area, it just seems that it makes sense to just protect those property owners and to make the zoning change.
I would agree, it brings it more into conforming with what's around it, hopefully, eventually, at some point, we might be able to get all of that into that, but it definitely makes sense to, to bring as much of it in climate as you can, and help the property owners out where you can to be able to, you know, use their properties the way they intend it.
Okay, other comments?
So with that, mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 19-9 to amend the zoning map from light manufacturing to RE-20.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, looks like it's approved. Now, we have a public hearing to consider ordinance 19-10 to amend the zoning map, so with that, do I have a motion then to go to public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing, this is to discuss then the amending, excuse me, the zoning map for RE-3 to community commercial on 3926 South Midland Drive, Steve?
Thank you, again, this is just a request to amend portions of a property that are at 3926, it'd be the front half of that particular property that fronts onto Midland Drive. Earlier, you approved a subdivision, so what this does, subdivision-wise, Lot 5 is the one that's kind of the top that fronts Midland, it brings all of Lot 5 into community commercial. Lot 6, which is the back half of this, they're unsure really what to do with it at the time, or at the moment, I should say, no one's showed any interest commercially to be behind potentially another building, so they want to kind of protect their rights to have multifamily, but they did say, if a commercial business comes in and says, hey, we want this, we'll be back to rezon that back half. So this is just, again, the front half, so Lot 5 is all completely commercial. No site plans have come, no businesses have made application yet for this, but they are anticipating, a few of them within the next few months will apply for site plan approval. Again, Lot 5 is conditioned for the request for rezone. Future land use map has it to be commercial, the zoning map has this parcel plus the one to the north, a zone R3, the one to the north, though, is a little more protected, it's owned by Roy City, it's a regional detention pond, so unless we, the city, decide to sell it, it's going to remain as is, like it is, without any issues. Actually, when we heard about this, I talked to Ross, saying, hey, sell that and give it, make it commercial, but I'm not able to remove the detention pond quite as easily as I was hoping.
Yeah, that needs to stay.
So, again, they did have a public hearing on the 9th of July, a few people did come out, one was concerned they live to the south, or to the east of this, it's kind of the quarter parcel residential, their concern was more just people jumping their fence to get into their pool, they have a six-foot fence, they've done everything that they needed to do, I said, unfortunately, I can't predict how kids are going to react to this, but any development will now kind of cause it to be more open, climate fence, but right now, it's such a large, empty parcel, no one goes in there. The other one was one of the two parcels that are in red or in pink, depending that's zoned currently community commercial, but they're a resident, they just wanted to make sure that their property wasn't going to be affected by being changed to something else. So, that was really the two concerns that came out of it. Both Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval of the rezoned portion of the property.
Okay, Steve, thank you. We are in a public hearing, if you have any comments, if you'd like to make a comment, come to the microphone, give us your name and address. Okay, oh, please, Brayden?
Mayor, council, Brayden Standard, 5544 South, 3750 West. I'm obviously not impacted by this, but I've been impacted by a recent decision with community commercial. The only thing that I would point out is, the property that's going to be landlocked, you know, what happens with that, does it become a weed patch for the guy behind him? And then also, it's kind of an, if they, if we build it, they will come kind of concept, there's really not a slated thing for that, and, you know, the community commercial carries certain things that I know will fix in the future, but that'd be my only thing looking at it, is what do you do with that parcel, is it just going to grow weeds, and, you know, to me, they should probably connect, or I think that's really just a little better solution, I would recommend.
Okay, thank you. I will indicate to you, public, I think the Crabtree, Crabtree property owns this area, was really anticipating the Walmart to go into West Haven, and in doing so at the time, it would have really boosted a lot more business opportunities in this particular area, but when Walmart decided to pull out, it kind of changed the whole dynamics in this particular area, and so I think there's been a lot of caution right now to figure out what's next, that we may be seeing evidence of that caution right now, what is next, and so we're not sure. But community commercial will give them some, some leverage, if in fact, there is an opportunity for some type of community business to go with that location. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Council can have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing, council, comments?
I have one question, Steve, the parcel that is behind it that was just discussed, who owns that?
Crabtree.
So that's all owned by Crabtree?
They just second-guessed to rezon it, right? At this time?
Again, it's just, in discussing, I can't divulge, I know two businesses that are coming in this location, I can't divulge who they are, again, that's not made public, but one of them will be on Lot 5, and they will basically block Lot 6 from frontage view, so their concern is, is they don't have any, they've had people talk about lots 2 and 4, one is, again, one of those businesses is slated for, but no one is interested in Lot 6, just because that, again, there's no street frontage, they're going to be behind a building, you're going to be blocked.
Steve, let's talk about that. Potentially being landlocked if you don't have easements from everywhere all the way around.
The, kind of the checker look, that is a cross-access easement.
In reality, I don't see any council saying, all right, let's throw this multifamily behind all of this, before the access, the landlock, this is the whole thing, trying to pack everyone behind there, I know it's still zoned there, but that's potential problems for later on, and then how, also, as we know, prior issues, how do we, if, let's say it goes multifamily, what fancy requirements such goes along, any requirements we do that, do the site plan, you know, I know it's the same owner, but it does leave potential conflicts later down the road. He's okay with that?
Well, I mean, it says in fire access and stuff.
When you've got the access coming around.
Again, the fire department is part of the DRC, so they will have that interest in how are they going to be able to access it, even if it was a commercial business in Lot 6, they would still have the same things, right?
That's why you've got access to create.
Right, across X, because, again, Lot 6 doesn't have access to a road.
I mean, it creates a dead island of a property, which we've always tried to stay away from, that's.
But, yeah, the developer leaving in R3 does have more options, again, if they have a commercial business that's interested in it, they'll be here to rezon the back half, they just want to leave their options open in case a developer for.
Well, and it could be to where, I mean, we're second guessing ourselves, I mean, we don't know for sure, I mean, you do have some, you know, interest in stuff in the property, but nothing has come to us actually concrete at all, to be able to look at it, to be able to see if we say, no, this won't work, you do have to rezon the other property in order for it to fit, so we are second guessing to see what will actually happen to the property, and we can put recommendations or requirements on it. I mean, we do have a property owner that will, I mean, we can sign or look at it, they don't take care of the property as far as the weed patch and everything that was brought up, you know, there's a property owner that owns that. So, I mean, it fits in with that area that we have zoned as far as in our general plan and future land use map, as far as that being a community commercial area anyway, so I think zoning that is the best thing to do, however, we do need to, when we start seeing some concrete information, look at that landlocked area.
Good comments. Correct me if I'm wrong, the city council probably will not see that, I think we've delegated most of that land use authority over to the Planning Commission, we'll address the zoning map requirements and general plan amendments, but the Planning Commission will basically entertain what we now can do within that, once the council agrees or doesn't agree with what we're about to do. So, just be aware, council, that the Planning Commission has, has been a little more authority here to figure out what's next, we can surely read about it, we can ask questions, but the reality is that decision rests with the Planning Commission, so. Okay, council, any other comments, any other thoughts?
Steve, that Lot 6, only one access off of 4000.
Well, they'll, they'll have access from 4000 and.
And from Midland.
Both projects have, the whole project has an access off of Midland and 4000.
Which is to go, couple of commercial buildings up there, like, access off of Midland is limited, let's put it that way, not to say restricted.
Well, it's the same going across from Maverick, across the street, because you have the entrances almost directly, is that almost that entrance almost directly from where?
One of our comments was that this access would be square with the one that's across the street.
With map, okay.
And then UDOT, unfortunately, limits them to the number of access points off of Midland.
Right.
But it will be big enough, our ordinance requires, I want to say, 36-foot to come in, the cross-access is, again, so Lot 4, which, again, is, is landlocked as well, has access to 4000 and Midland, say it was Lot 6, yeah.
There's good points, yes, it should be commercial, no doubt about it, okay, as long as it's the same property owner, he knows the problems with that back of Lot 6, possibly in the future, it's on him, he knows it is there.
Okay, other comments, council? Okay, do I have a motion then to approve ordinance 19-10 to amend the zoning map from R3 to community, community commercial at the location of 3926 South Midland Drive?
Okay, mayor, would you like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve ordinance 19-10? Okay, my glasses on, am I right? Did I get my numbers on? Okay, to amend zoning map from R3 multifamily residential to CC community commercial located at 3926 South Midland Drive.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a first and a second, this is a roll call vote, Morgan?
Councilmember Saxton.
I have to go first?
Aye. Councilmember Paul.
It's a tough one.
Councilmember Yeoman.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Thank you, approved. Okay, we have resolution 19-16 approving interlocal corporate agreement between the MIDA to provide certain maintenance pally services to the Falcon Hill project area. Matt, you and I have been engaged in this one for a while, let's see if we can explain what we're talking about, would you like to lead that?
Yeah, I'll go for it for a little bit. As you stated, resolution 19-16, I'd like to explain a little bit what MIDA is, it's the Military Installation Development Authority, put a face to the name, it's more of Falcon Hill going over to Roy City for some of the people here that don't, that doesn't know. So a couple of months ago, we were asked to, to do some of the municipal services up there, police, fire, not really providing services as far as water and sewer, but to help maintain some of the lanes, some of the big, bigger stuff is the planning, and some of the building inspecting, things like that. So when we, when we started going through this agreement, the idea was, is not to enrich ourselves, but to break even, but to also minimize risks, so there's, there's a place in the agreement that says that we can terminate within 90 days, either party can also do that. Some of the pros to, to this agreement is to become a good neighbor to MIDA, to help facilitate the development up there, and to hopefully trickle that development down to Roy. Some of the other stuff might be is public safety, if we were to get a call without an agreement, we would respond and not get paid, an agreement would allow us to get paid. Some of the cons would be, is that our workforce doesn't have, it's not like we're waiting for work, we have quite a bit to do, and to add a burden on to them is, it's not like we're wanting to add employees or anything like that, so this is above and beyond what they are already currently doing, and that's, you know, some of the cons with them. But anyway, so let's just have a discussion and see what you guys feel about this agreement.
If I can add to that, what's about to happen that is. If I can add to that, what's about to happen that is public now is they're going to build some office space. And not just a little, but some big. That office space will bring, we believe initially, about 1,200 new jobs, high-paying jobs to that locality, with plans that go all the way to 4,000. What is not known, and they're not talking, is about who that will be. That's still pretty confident. But the fact is, is that it will happen. They're going to build those offices up there. Much like Clearfield today provides a similar agreement with Falcon Hills to the south, the MITIT board has basically asked Roy City to take and help with the services on the north in Weber County. And I think it's echoed, at least I can ask those who are in the business, we don't get paid right now, today, for services. If we get a call from the police or get a call from fire to go into Riverdale or Hooker, we have interlocal agreements with them, and we just go in. We provide that service. This one, we get paid. So when fire goes in, or if there's a need for police to go in, the reality is, is that we will basically put an invoice to the MITIT, and MITIT will reimburse our costs, okay, of providing that service. And so as we see it, in essence, is we're not looking to make any money. That's not our intent. But to be a good neighbor and help facilitate an expansion that's going to happen, and it's a sizable expansion that's going to happen at that location. So, council, just to give you a heads up, the MITIT board has approved their interlocal agreement with Roy. They're asking us now to look at this, and if we agree that we'd like to also venture in this agreement with them, they're in a position where they'd like us to approve this and then set up arrangement by which we can collaborate in terms of providing this kind of services, services to the north part of Hill Air Force Base. Okay? We can get more detail if you have specific questions, but that's the crux of what's about to happen. Comments, questions, council? No, this one, just a resolution. I mean, if there could be, we could ask if anybody may have a comment. You're surely welcome. We didn't plan for it, but we surely want to keep this pretty open. If you have a comment or question, please come to the mic and give us your name and address and ask your question. We'll see if we can entertain an answer to that.
Mayor, I got some thoughts on that. In all honesty, for me, isn't interlocal agreement. Interlocal agreement is with another agency, an entity, municipality where you share ...
Responsibility.
Exactly. Responsibility. As you mentioned, public safety, yes, we go in there. But if we have a public safety event, they are ceding us nothing. We get nothing in return.
That's correct.
It's more or less, hey, Roy City, you want to be a independent contractor for us, which isn't the job of our municipality in one way. Yes, Clearfield has it. I talked to the city manager there. Not happy about it, but they agreed to deal with it. He thought it was the right, not him, but the people of Victoria thought it was the right political thing to do. We need to step back and realize what Falcon Hill is, is basically going to be their own little city, their own little town, their own entity. They're going to have their own services, and part of that growing pain with any community that decides to do their own thing is they should know and have to buy these services, not buy, but plan for these services, have their own public works, have their own police, have their own fire, whatever it may be. They're asking municipalities to do that for them. And by law, we can't go over or make any money on it because of how MITIT is set up. So yes, we can only break even on this part. Breaking even isn't something any third-party contractor wants to do. We're not in it to make money. And yes, we always want to be neighborly, but that's a two-way street. We get nothing in return from here, at all.
Well, let me define what we get in return. There's going to be 4,000 high-paying jobs coming to Roy area. It's not going to be in Roy, but it's going to be there. And we're not talking about just trivial jobs. These are high-paying jobs. Today, Hill Air Force Base puts, last calculation, $3.4 billion of economical impact into our communities. Let me make that clear. $3.4 billion annually that feeds our communities. And with that, we have all of these people. We've got roughly 24,000 people currently working in Hill Air Force Base, and with that, there's going to be another 4,000 added on to that. And so our intent here, in terms of providing the service, was simply saying is, is that we're saying is, is that we support our military contingency. We're basically also saying is, is that we want to see higher-paying job opportunities come into Hill Air Force Base in this area. There's a move we're going to be facing, I sent an invitation to you, Matt, where the Davis and Weber County recently signed an agreement to have an economic development. One of the prime things they want to do in our community is basically put Northern Utah to be the aerospace industry for Utah. Much like you hear about Silicon Slope going on in Utah County, they see that aerospace industry is a big money-making opportunity, and they want to look at doing things like that into Northern Utah. Roy City has an interesting perspective here. We're caught right in the middle. We're the first city that comes into if you're going into, from Davis to Weber, and we're the last city when you go out, Weber. We have the only gate into Hill Air Force Base in Weber County. And so logic was, is simply, and that's how they see it, the logic was, is that we need to basically see if there's ways by which we can facilitate these opportunities that we have being so close to this big employer in Northern Utah. Second thing, and I appreciate Councilman Tafoya's comment, would be is, is that there may be political issues associated with this. I will tell you, there are some things that will have to change and things that need to be take place within Roy. And if we can, in fact, get some political power to help us get the changes we need at the state level, then I think MITIT and some of these organizations could be helpless to make those things happen. You can't deny that. And so the challenge we have tonight would be is, and it's a challenge we have to decide, is this council saying is, "Let's try it." I think Matt's opening comment would be is, 90 days. If we do not believe that it's in the best interest of Roy City, this council can reverse this contract agreement and simply pull out, as well as the MITIT board can do the same thing. But let me make it clear, that development that's going to happen within feet of Roy City is going to happen with or without us. Either we're going to be partners in this opportunity, or we're going to sit back and watch it all unfold. But it will happen. The question is, how can we be involved in it? Can we be involved in it? And more importantly is, can we benefit from it from the standpoint of saying is, we're going to be reimbursed for any services we provide? That's the question we have to ask.
Okay, so just a couple of questions that I had when I was reading through it. You kind of piggybacked on Councilman Tafoya. Basically, because I was, my first thought was, okay, if this is, because it's kind of on Hill Air Force Base property, but it's not on Hill Air Force Base property, because it's kind of like this little island there. And I'm like, well, shouldn't they, just like if they're creating this area, shouldn't they be providing? I know Hill Air Force Base has got a fire department, and they've got to have some type of security. Wouldn't they be providing that, services to that area that they are constructing?
Yes.
So that was the first thought that I was thinking is, why are they not providing it, you know, for that area, and why do we have to provide it? Again, also piggybacking on that too, it's like, okay, being the good neighbors, to be able to provide that service, I think that we have to have an out, because, I mean, I know, again, we don't know anyway until it gets built and the population growth and what type of things are going to be happening, how much it might put more extra pressure or services on our, you know, on our public safety, you know, as far as putting our fire department or our police department to be able to go up and provide those services. I don't know how we can predict that. I feel that we do need to have an out on this. I don't feel that this needs to be a, you know, we're going to just do it because, again, it's a, yeah.
Is there a reason for the 90-day limit? What if that was extended?
I mean, because 90 days, it's not going to be built.
They wouldn't want to get it done.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that 90 ...
So I don't know what it's going to be.
We try for 90 days and decide if we want to go, or anytime we give them 90 days and we're out?
We have a 90-day.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That makes it a little bit better, because I was going to say, 90 days, you're not going to have anything there.
No.
Oh, great.
You want to wait till it's built and established and then decide.
I think it is bringing, like the mayor says, I mean, it's potential for, you know, a big development coming in that is going to be bringing commercial resources to our area. But along with that brings the more traffic, and we just had UDOT here talking about more congestion, you know, coming down on 56, coming out of Falcon Ridge. So there, I mean, there is some other negative, you know, aspects. It could happen, you know, for our city, but also there's positives too, as far as bringing in some economic development and some commercial services to us.
So we would provide those services for 90 days?
No, we'd provide it right now, and then ...
We'd provide it forever. Forever, until we give them 90-day notice.
Correct, right.
So we would know from our police chief, from our fire chief, from our public safety, whatever, at some point, we can't do this without hiring more manpower?
Yeah.
Without hiring, without.
Correct. And then we'd say, 90 days, we're out.
Now you give them 90-day notice.
And because we have to protect our citizens and make sure that we have the manpower to be able to man our city, not just take on Falcon Ridge.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's a big thing. It's a big office building, big high-rise. How are we equipped to handle that? How many stories is it going to be?
Three.
So our ladder truck will take care of that.
Oh, yeah, we have the resources to handle it.
What about our public quirks? Would that impact them?
It could. The key would be is, is that, and it's a question we've got to ask, and we're going to have to walk this through, and by the way, Quirco's been doing this for about 10 years on the other side. Have they hired any additional people as a product of what they've been involved? And that's a question I think we need to ask. If they found that there's been repetitive requirements that drove the necessity to provide that service, and they are being paid for that service, that could constitute a need that simply says, "We have a revenue stream that's coming in, and we need to hire the people to support it." Now, to be honest with you, Travis, I don't expect to see parks up there, but in terms of public works and fire department and that, that's the services and planning is what they're asking us to provide assistance.
Mayor, we throw this out this year. We put on my sewer board hat, as a member. Years ago, we knew Falcon Hill was developed and came on. 10 years, or I would say eight to seven years, been asking them, "Hey, you need to send us a site plan and a development plan in order for the district to take that growth, because it hasn't been planned in." And we got deaf ears, letter after letter, nothing after nothing. Last week, someone finally came and said, "Hey, by the way, we need to connect." All right, so the district lifted the site plan. They wanted us to connect, can you connect to 5600 or 1800? 1800 is already been planned out for expansion. If you came to 5600, that would have cost you a lot more money. Odd magnet is, "Nope, we're having over to 1800 because of that." But it doesn't solve the issue for the district. All of other potential sites that come up need to be studied and planned on. And again, we've been told, "Okay," but they've done nothing to do that. Because what happens is, once these things get built, the flow ends up going down lines and can't handle the flow, especially if they want to come to 56. So that would be major cost upgrades to not only the citizens of Roy, but the citizens of every city and county, entity, and the district itself.
Well, I would expect that if they come in and indicated they need, if they're going to put two, roughly half a million square foot office facility up there, and they need Davis Sewer to basically connect up, they're going to pay for the infrastructure upgrades. I can't see Davis City saying ...
That's the problem, because the past eight years, they're saying, "No, we don't have to, because we're going to connect here or that." We haven't gotten a straight answer from who is going to pay. As any other developer, who isn't in question? Okay, a developer would have to pay for the upgrades. Since it's a quasi-military government, those are unanswered questions that nobody's been able to give the district. So that's why I just throw that caution out there for that.
Well, if you can't go with North Davis, then tap into Central Weber.
I was just going to say, 2008, we were a little nervous we're on Hillfield. They came to us, wanted us to provide water. In the middle of that building, they come back to us and said, "Weber Basin to provide water." So I don't want to maintain their water lines from Weber Basin when they have all the people. So, that's my opinion.
Well, the mayor?
Yes.
Mike Wagstaff is here, if you'd like to hear from him as well.
Oh, Mike, please. Maybe you can provide some guidance. Mike, tell us, first, your name, your address, and more importantly, tell us how you're involved in this.
Mike Wagstaff, 224 East 300 North Farmington, Utah. I'm the mat with MITIT. I do all the municipal services with Falcon Hill. And so I've been working with Clearfield for the last five years. And so, and I just, I hear all these, you know, part of the conversation go back and forth, and I can answer some, a lot of the questions. I mean, we built three buildings over there, really two and a half. I mean, they're really small, they're not doing, I mean, they do X services. I thoroughly enjoy the relationship I have with them. I, you know, they do some street painting, they do some responding to accidents, et cetera. We haven't had any fires. It's very scalable. We're building one building, and we hope to build, you know, we hope the project does, you know, builds four, builds a quad up there. But it's still scalable in that this has been going on for 12 years, and we have three buildings. So it's not like an overnight, you know, gold rush up there.
Okay.
I just want to be here for any other questions. And then, Councilman Tafoya?
Yeah.
So I'm the one that put those meetings together. I'm the one that said, "Hey, let's, you guys got," and I'm the one telling the developer, and it's not a quasi-government. MITIT is a state authority, and then the developer is a developer, private developer. So I'm the one giving them to the table with North Davis, saying, "You've got to get information to these guys now, and it's, or else you're not going to be served." It's that simple. So I just want to know, I want you to know that you have my commitment to make sure that link, that communication is still, you know, going forward, it's more than open, so.
One last, see if I can add, offer at least some insight. Hill Air Force Base has a really, pretty, really good, both police officers, security officers, as well as fire department. The challenge is, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there was a fire at the museum today, which technically is on the lease portion, or at least part of the lease of Hill Air Force Base, by the time they got a fire department to there, Roy would have probably been on site first, and more than likely, had the fire out. They got to bring that thing all the way from the east side and bring it down that road to get to that fire. Close proximity of Roy to that allows then not only for police service as well as fire service to be most expedient. We didn't, we have the same issues with the islands and the county islands in Roy. If there was an issue in the county islands we had in Roy, our police force was there, our fire department was there. And so my comment would be is, if nothing else happened and no change, the agreements we have with Hill Air Force Base today says that Jeff, if there's a fire at that location, you're going to move.
Yeah, we have all that.
And you'll be there a whole lot faster than what we would see coming out of the east side. So the question then becomes is, is that what's the difference?
Well, let's talk about it, Mayor, because you're trying to say this is also military Hillfield, which it is not.
Right, that's what ...
Okay, it is not.
That's why you brought up a really good, a really good point about, what is it? Why doesn't the, why doesn't the Hill Air Force Base respond? This is an enhanced use lease, is what it is. It's 550 acres that will be developed over a period of time.
Time, yeah.
So what happens is, is when a little piece gets developed, a Mylar's created, and then that's recorded with the county, and that starts an STL, which is a site development lease. That lease goes for 50 years. So you can, we have three going, you know. But once it, once the enhanced use lease becomes, the fence goes back, it becomes, it's still military land underneath, it's still federal, but the lease takes over, and now it's public. So the military doesn't, yeah, they're like, "That's not ours now. See ya."
Right, so then surrounding cities have to pick up those services, provide those services.
Well, that's, it's MITIT jurisdiction, and MITIT has chose not to choose, not to hire a whole bunch of, you know, departments and contract that work out.
Which I can see, I mean, because like you stated, this has been in the works for how many years that Falcon Hill, you know, was started. So, I mean, it, I can see why they didn't want to put in that infrastructure and those services and stuff and pay for that when it's not really like ...
We're also not going to get the benefit.
We're going to see one penny from tax dollars.
Well, after 50 years. Well, let's be careful with that statement. The fact of the matter is, whatever development may take place in there, and whatever retail may come along with that, Clinton's going to build, excuse me, Clearfield is, MITIT is going to put a hotel in Clearfield on that Falcon Hill site. You're probably involved in that. Have they broke ground yet on that hotel?
Yeah.
Okay. The bottom line is, is that that still has to go into the tax base. And under the 50/50 rule, Camille, you and Matt are probably the experts on this, but intuitively I would think that it's a 50/50 draw. 50% goes to the entity by which the city or municipality where they made the purchase, and 50% of that sales tax goes into a pot, and the distribution of that pot is based on population.
Hey, Zach, hey, I didn't realize that.
Two-thirds of our sales tax revenue in this city today comes from the population.
Right.
Not by sales tax. If they basically have those advantages, they have those amenities to those people there, and they're going to eat somewhere, they're going to stay somewhere. to those people there, and they're going to eat somewhere, they're going to stay somewhere, then the fact of the matter is, money will be spent. And if it's spent, why not spend in Roy? And if not Roy, why not spend close to Roy?
And I understand the statement...
We're talking 4,000 more jobs.
It's a good legitimate statement, but you also need to realize, that's Davis County. We are not Davis County, Weaver County. We don't get that piece of the pie.
You get 50%, the law states 50-50. It says 50% of the sales tax revenue is given to the city of the place of actually the cell. 50% of all sales tax, Matt, goes into the state pot.
Population.
And then it's reduced to based on population.
So people in St. George will get the same share as we would.
And today, Roy City's sales tax, two-thirds of all the revenue we get in Roy City's sales tax comes because of our 38,000 residents. Some cities' perception is, build more resident base, you get much more, a bigger piece of the sales tax pie.
After 25 years...
After 25?
At 25, no, after 25 years, you'll see some of that out of MIDA, but you'll see it now because of 4,000-plus jobs.
No, it's, how do we say, I just, I mean, I, how do we say no to 4,000 jobs? I mean, the growth is...
I don't think that's the issue. This is gonna be built here regardless. If you say yes, all this is about if we wanna provide these services, okay? So that's kind of an equal point, separate points, about do we want to do this service?
Does it leverage anything for us if we provide these services? That's...
In my opinion, it does. So here's, here's the bottom line. Either Roy steps up and does it, or they go somewhere else. And maybe they bring Clearfield in, or maybe they go to Riverdale, or go somewhere else. But somebody's going to do it. There's not an option here. It's gonna happen. So the question is, do we see some benefit by which Roy's stepping up? And remember, if we get in this thing two or three years, and we simply says, man, this is not working for us, then I guess we can simply say, council, you got 90 days, give them 90-day notice and simply cancel the agreement. But why are we not taking advantage, at least the opportunity to watch it? And I've talked to Mark Shepard, the mayor of Clearfield, and he loves it. So I think if Mark Shepard is basically feeling like there's a real problem that Clearfield is having because of the 12 years they've been working these agreements, okay, down there, that he would at least come back and said, it's been a pain in my butt. But the reality is, I'm not hearing any of that.
What are we hearing from their city manager?
I've talked to JJ just a little bit about it, and he kinda reiterated the same things as just saying, you know, we do it because we're a good neighbor. We're not enriching the city to do it. It's extra work for us, but we're doing it as a good neighbor.
So...
He says it hasn't been too burdensome, that there's not a whole lot of call volume coming in because of that.
The burden right now would be one building and a very, very small road in the winter. Not this year, but next year.
Yeah.
To plow. That would be my...
To Clearfield or to Roy?
To Roy, right now, the building permit, permitting process, right now, then the inspections for that building, then once it comes online next, next year, August, September, then that winter, I will need that road to plow. That, and then, and then any accidents that occur in the parking lot would respond to that.
And can you remind me, how many will that employ, that one building?
1,200, yeah.
Okay.
I got a question for you. Why do you need our planning if it's your own entity, but you need to have our planning?
We, we have about four employees with MIDA. Not employed, and half of them are contract employees. That's why.
I won't be involved, because planning goes through their planning commission, which is, I'm on. Their DRC is their planning commission. So from a planning standpoint, it's not me, it's more, the building department will be the one, they review the building plans for construction, and then we'd be doing the inspections for it, and then Tammy would be issuing the business license and the permit itself. So it's the community development department, not necessarily planning.
MIDA's its own land use jurisdiction, but we don't have the office, the back office to facilitate the processes.
And Ross Public Works, what do you see happening for us there?
That's the thing, I haven't seen any plans of having 12, having water line out, have a clue of it, before, you know, so...
You were just tasked to give fees, and that was it?
Yeah, but like the mayor said, 90 days, if we have 90 days, we have something to lock, I guess. That's all.
Does Clearfield have that same, did Clearfield put that same in there? I mean, I don't want to like get into what Clearfield did, and I don't want any, you know, to know, but...
You want to know?
I just didn't...
And now?
Yeah, I didn't know if they put that in their contract or not, but I mean, that is their city.
I, I can't recall what Clearfield does, but I...
I'm sure they do.
90 days is really, really short, because a lot of what I see in most are 180-day term. So on our end, the smaller that time period is, the shorter that time period is, the better for us.
The better.
Yeah.
Because I, I've seen them sometimes worth six months or a year, you know, but 90 days is a...
This has been a really good discussion as far as getting some of the pros and cons, you know, with it. And I think overall, from my aspect, I, I think, you know, being the good neighbor and to be able to provide the services, I can see why they're, they're not providing the services. We don't know the impact, that's hard to guess, you know, what it's going to be in the future. I think just as long as our, you know, our, our services, our public safety and our public works and that, if they ever felt that this is being a burdensome on our city, that that has to be addressed first, and then as long as we make it in the contract that we have that, if it's not going to be working for our city, we have that 90-day contract to be able to pull out. If it's something that's being, coming in cumbersome to our city, I think, you know, we, it's hard to predict future and what it's going to be. So, yeah, get moving forward with the information you have now and try to see how it will affect in the future.
Exactly. And Matt, I think that's a great comment, because, because the allegiance of our department heads and the city manager has to be to the city first. And if this does become a cumbersome issue, it becomes where we're not able to meet the demands of our city, and we're not even effectively able to do the work that they expect of us, then I would expect the department heads and the city manager to step up and simply says, there's too much risk here, let's back out of this agreement. But in the meantime, not knowing all the answers, and then making a decision that simply says, well, let's don't do it because it might, I think that just puts us in a tough spot. And so I, I think if, if the agreement we come from this is, we will support it, but as condition on the fact is, is that there's a 90-day clause in the contract agreement, great. And second is, is that we'd expect our department heads to step up and make sure that we don't put ourselves in a compromising position, then I think that's an expectation to come out of this discussion.
Okay. Is that 90-day clause already written? I don't remember it being in the contract. Does that have to be amended?
No.
It's already in there?
No.
Okay.
No strings attached. We can cut them in 90 days.
No, there's no qualifications. It's like a similar, quite often I'll put in a termination for convenience, but that, there's no...
Okay.
There's enough strings attached to 90-day notice.
Okay.
Good discussion, council. Any other comments on this?
Go ahead, which question?
Brian?
Brian's got a question on his mind.
Mike, question.
Yes, yes.
You put buildings on this, these properties, so it raises the value of the property. Who gets, how is the property taxed?
25 years from MIDA gets it.
In 25 years?
Four, 25 years.
Oh, four, and then what happens?
Kind of reverse back to wherever it is.
Davis County.
But it's not Roy. Well, on the south side, everything's annexed into Clearfield, so it's all in Clearfield.
Correct.
And there, and we did annex it all in, so it was all the same tax, tax rate.
But, but to your comment then, Weaver County cuts a big piece of Hiller Forest Base off, and that piece that's being cut off is in Weaver County. So it won't go into Davis County, it's in Weaver County. So the question then become, who, technically today it's sitting in Riverdale.
Well, yeah, correct. I thought it was in unincorporated, or portions in unincorporated.
There is part of that, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. So it's debatable, but 25 years from now, that discussion takes place about where that should go or not go.
We'll be dead. So don't worry about it.
We'll be dead.
We'll be dead.
Yeah, we won't need to worry about it.
We'll be dead. There's some pretty young people out here, they don't want to...
I'm just kidding. I'm so sorry I made that comment.
She didn't mean to say you'd be dead.
We'll be dead. You and I will be. So sorry.
It's probably why.
Any other comments on this?
Just before we hit the vote, just to give my perspective, it's not a true interlocal agreement. We give nothing, it's one-sided, and we are basically handout city services to contract to a developer, which we shouldn't be doing, but that's all I can say.
Okay, any other dialogue on this? Okay, then, council, do I have a resolution to approve Resolution 19-6, approving interlocal corporate agreement with MIDA to provide certain municipality services to Falcon Hill project area? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution number 19-16, approving, do I have to use the word interlocal?
Interlocal.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Andy.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, interlocal corporation. I guess the corporation agreement I like better, with MIDA to provide certain municipal services to the Falcon Hill project as written, along with the 90-day clause that is in it, if it ever becomes burdensome on our city.
I like that. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Mark, Mark?
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
No.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, okay. Resolution 19-17, approving ambulance transportation rates and charges. Jeff, you gonna share that with us?
Yeah, for council, this should go a little bit quicker.
I think that's the 90 days.
Mine's pretty simple. Anyway, Resolution 19-17 is just approving the new ambulance transportation rate and charges for the state. Every year on July 1st, the State of Utah Bureau of EMS makes adjustments to the rates that we charge for that. This is just, what you can see is the, just their rate change. So this is just approving the rate change.
That is set by the state.
That is set by the state, yeah. We follow the state rules for that. Yeah, we don't set any of our own rates. The state sets those, so every ambulance, trans, anybody across the state probably uses the same exact rates.
Okay. Council comments on that? Any questions?
Motion to approve Resolution 19-17.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. This is a roll call vote. Andy?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries. Thank you, okay. Now, public comment period. This is an opportunity to bring any subject and topic you'd like, so if you have a question or a comment, please step up to the mic. Just give us your name and your address. Glenda?
Seeing as I wrote this out, I'm gonna...
Okay.
Glendmore, 2088 West, 3825 South. This is a request to remove the beekeeper registration fee in Roy City, Utah. An estimated one of every three vites of food is dependent on pollination provided by bees. According to the U.S. Department of Agriculture figures, the number of managed honey bee hives is half of what it was in the 1950s. Clearly, bees are an important species that we need to preserve and encourage. In 1892, beekeepers lobbied the Utah Territorial Legislature to pass the first Bee Inspection Act. In years since, the state has required each beekeeper to register with the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food, as provided in that act. In 2013, Roy City approved an ordinance to allow beekeeping in city limits. My only issue is with Roy City's fee for beekeeping, not with the content of the ordinance itself. Of the 47 towns I researched in northern Utah, 33 list beekeeper or apiaries in their city code. Of those 33, eight also require that the beekeeper register their hives with their city. Of those eight, four require an initial registration fee, and one city requires that the beekeeper pay a recurring annual fee to the city. That city is Roy. Let's look at what the city's registration fee does in comparison to the state's registration fee. The $15 Roy City fee is to set up the permit paperwork and the slight possibility of having to do code enforcement in the future. Roy City deals with code enforcement on a complaint basis, so it's not like the annual fee is literally funding regular visits from a city employee. The annual registration fee with the state of Utah, which is $10 for one to 20 bee hives, is used to provide sanitation supplies to bee inspectors, dispose of abandoned beekeeping equipment, assist in the treatment of destruction of colonies infected with disease, provide for statewide honey bee health surveys, and monitoring of Africanized bees. They also provide the beekeeper with complimentary health inspection and lab testing services by a county inspector, alerts regarding the outbreaks of diseases or pests in the area, and warnings if there are movements of Africanized bees in the state. In summary, of the almost 50 northern Utah cities I researched, only four charge a registration fee. Of those, Roy City is the only city that has an annual registration fee. Let me say that again. Of nearly 50 researched cities, only Roy City requires a recurring registration fee for beekeepers, and only four require an initial registration fee. My proposal is that ideally, Roy City drop both the initial and recurring fees to be more in line with other cities' administration. Failing the ideal, I propose that Roy City eliminate the annual registration fee. And I have some handles for you.
Good information, Glenda.
And I don't have a bee hive, so, if you'll pass that around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any comments to that?
I have a question. Do we know the numbers we have?
There are 22 bee hives registered in the state of Utah. I don't know how many are registered.
Do we know how many we have that are operating, not registered?
I know that it's because they need to be registered. I mean, working on the mosquito abatement board, when they spray, they have to know where those bee hives are, because they have to avoid spraying in those areas, or those bees, they can potentially kill bees. So I know they need, they like them to be registered with those cities, so they know where they're at for the spraying. So I think our initial registration fee, so that we know that they, where they're at for other services, but I think it's good to also look at our ordinance to see if it's something from an environmental standpoint or to be able to look at for the future.
I have a question for you, Glenda. I don't know if you know this, or if I can read it really quick. What is our initial fee compared to other cities? So if we were to drop the annual, how does our initial fee compare to others?
On the second sheet of the papers that I gave you, you'll see. One is 15, one is, I think, 75, and the other is 15, and one is 5.
Okay.
Okay. And the state does maintain a complete list of all the registered bee hives. So mosquito abatement is probably looking at that list and not the city's list.
Good information, thank you for sharing. Okay, council, something to ponder and consider as we move forward. Anybody else have a public comment? Anything they'd like to share with us, please. Just state your name and address. Corey?
My name's Corey Crossley, 5552 South, 3752 West. And I do respectfully address the council members, the mayor, and the city officials. I'm a neighbor of the newly constructed Sunridge Assisted Living in Roy Facility. My wife, along with other neighbors, addressed the council on June 4th, and identified several municipal code violations, which negatively impact residential homeowners due to the construction of the Sunridge Roy Facility. Those code violations pertain to 10-10-31, required compatibility transitioning between residential and non-residential districts. It is very disappointing and hard to believe that Roy City approved a site plan that didn't comply in multiple ways with its own municipal code requirements, which took away property rights from residential homeowners and gave them to Sunridge Roy. On June 9th, Mayor Dandoy drafted a thorough point paper on the Sunridge Assisted Living Development, which detailed policies, measurements, issues, and solutions. It's my understanding that the point paper was distributed to city council members on that time. that time. I sincerely hope that each council member has studied the point paper to gain an understanding of the validity and seriousness of the municipal code violations. I addressed the city council on June 18th and reiterated the negative impacts of the municipal code violations. I followed up by emailing additional information, including a marked-up site plan, to each city council member. To date, I have only had one city council member respond with a desire to learn more and see what the impacts were firsthand. On June 20th, civil neighbors whose homes border the Sun Ridge Roy facility met with Mayor Dandoy and Matt Andrews, our city manager. Since that time, I have exchanged multiple emails with them, and I've appreciated their willingness to respond and keep communication lines open. But at this time, no code violations have been resolved. There is one violation that can be solved quickly, and it pertains to lighting. There have been problems with lighting from the Sun Ridge Roy facility shining directly on residential property since late May. I've reported this issue to Roy City, the owners of Sun Ridge Roy, and the contractor. There have been some mitigation efforts, but they have fallen short of full resolution. A photometric study needs to be completed by the contractor on every exterior light at night in order to properly assess and correct existing lighting issues. Additionally, it's my understanding that there is an opportunity tonight for the city council to properly resolve a couple of the municipal code violations by authorizing necessary funding to install a privacy height masonry screen wall and to move the trash enclosure the requisite distance from the residential property line. It is my hope that an approval will be secured this evening for those two necessary corrections, with a view of ensuring resolution of all of the other code violations. I also ask that public comments be allowed following the mayor and council report, which is the next item on the agenda. This is a significant opportunity for Roy City government to demonstrate that individual residential property rights are very important to our leaders, and will be fully accounted for and not given away to commercial interest. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else would like to make a comment? Any topic, any subject?
I got one.
Oh?
Back a month ago, I wasn't here, you approved...
Put the mic, there you go.
You guys approved a cost of living raise to just the fire department. Got a chance to voice my opinion, and how disappointed my employees are with all of you, that you would do a cost of living for just one department and not the rest of us. I mean, if you listed us a wage adjustment through a power reserve, but a cost of living, gallon of milk, loaf bread, costs the same for us as it does the fire department.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
Steve Parkinson, Roy City Planning. I just want to follow Ross's comments. I believe back in the fiscal year 2017, during the budget issues, things were looked at in kind of a timeframe of what departments would be evaluated and increased during those times. In 2018, Public Works and Parks Departments were supposed to be evaluated and looked at. To my knowledge, it didn't happen. In 2019, and I say fiscal year 2019, administration and recreation were supposed to look at. Again, I don't recall any increases or anything being done with that. Fiscal year 2020, public safety was to be looked at, and during the public hearing, you did approve an increase for a portion of the public safety. I know back into the fiscal year 2018, and I might be off a year, both police and fire got a wage increase because of the survey salary, because they were losing employees, so they increased their wages there. Fiscal year 2019, a step increase was changed from 18 steps to 12 for the public safety, basically giving them a 3.75 merit increase, toward their rest of the employees only getting a 2, 2.5 percent increase. So again, it kind of favors more of the public safety realm than the rest of the employees that we not getting looked at, we're not getting... In fact, in this little memo, it says that there will be no COLA raises because they wanted to look at these departments every three years. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, any other comments, public comments? Please, just give us your name and the address.
This isn't my comments, I don't need this paper. I'm Carla Laird, my address is 5616 South, 3750 West. I'm a neighbor to the Sun Ridge Assisted Living Center also. Cory Crossley addressed most of my concerns, but I'm kind of on the corner, so I don't have as much of my property on there, but still have some unfortunate issues. I was really, this is my first city council meeting, by the way, and I'm very happy to hear...
Welcome.
I'm very happy to hear that Roy is such a good neighbor and all of these like positive opinions of the city, and so I'm hoping that those will come into play when you vote for the wall that we need to protect our privacy. My home has like a camera that can point into my yard. They told me it's very fixed into position on the door of the assisted living center, but the fact that it could move and look into my property is very concerning to me. We also have a fence issue. We've got my chain link fence, and they're very small vinyl fence, and there's a little gap where very tall weeds grow. No one's really taking care of it, so that's been an issue on my property as well. There's a nice neighborhood rat that lives in between, in the area. So all of these concerns are a really big deal to me, and I know that I'm not the only one that's concerned about them. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Oh, oh, sorry, one more thing. Will we be allowed to comment after the discussion later?
Typically, the mayor has the authority to basically allow public comments on just about any topic, so I'm leaning to the fact is to say we'll have an open conversation once we get that discussion item up, and then let the council kind of decide where we go from there after they get the input, okay?
Thank you. This is my first meeting, and it just seemed a little confusing that like the comments weren't last.
Well, this is a public comment for anything. We have chosen, obviously, to use this one, but as you can tell, we have salary issues and cost of living allowance issues, so any subject, any topic is fair game on public comment period. So you're okay?
Thank you.
By the way, welcome. Thanks for joining us. Name and address, thank you.
Jamie Larson, 5574 South, 3750 West, in Roy. And as you all know, I am also a neighbor of the Sun Ridge facility, and our main issues for my direct property is still the HVAC units, which now that the heat has started, it's loud, all day, every day, constant humming throughout the entire yard. Not so fun. Even with the fence there, it's not helping a ton. We also have the issue with the fences and the gap, and I don't know if the council's aware, I know Matt and the mayor are aware that they randomly took down the fence that they weren't supposed to take down, and then put another fence up, and even while that fence was down, they didn't take the time to clear out all that garbage that's still been sitting there. We still have all the ton of construction garbage, cups like from Maverick and 7-Eleven, new construction workers, branches, weeds, things we can't get to that are big, and they're just sitting there behind our property, not very nice to have. And as Carla mentioned, the rat is there, it's very large. My two-year-old wanted me to go find the mouse with her, that's how I saw it the first time, because she had seen it first, and she, we were not searching, that was a great thing to find. But we really just would like, first of all, the ordinances that are being violated addressed. The HVAC unit should be covered, we have issues with the dumpster, another neighbor with issues with the generator, the lighting, and list goes on and on, people looked at the mayor's paper. And then also to get our privacy back, because that building should have been a lot further away from us, and so even with a six-foot fence on top of all that backfill, there's still not a ton of privacy, and we've got all the water drainage issues because of the way they've got the sidewalks and the concrete, and just comes all into our properties, which isn't great, because I mentioned back in April, I've already been having a lot of water issues in our home, and so it's just been a really frustrating and trying time when you move into a community. I moved in at the end of September of 2017, so this started right after we moved in, and this has kind of been my view of Roy, and that's not what I think any of you want to have people coming into the community seeing as their only impression of the city. So that was my comments for today, and then hopefully we can have a good discussion once we hear what's being presented later on.
Okay, thank you. Anything else anybody would like to talk about? Okay, name and address, thank you.
Pretty Crossley, 5552 South, 3750 West. And just also in regards to the code violations, I just wanted, just to reiterate that you are a political subdivision of the state, and you are under obligation to be in line with code also of the state. The state also has a code that speaks to this, and it is in 10-9A5092. A municipality is bound by the terms and standards of applicable land use regulations and shall comply with mandatory provisions of those regulations. So when we talk about whether you're going to decide to do things, I don't know so much that it's you have, you are bound to do what the code says you are to do. So sometimes it's, it sounds like this is up for if you want to or not. And from what I read, it's not about what you want to do because you have a code in place that needs to be followed.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to share a thought? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move down the list. Let's go ahead and have the city manager report, so Matt, if you'd like to share your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I have a couple of things to report on. First of all, if anybody has been over by on 3100 and 5200 South, we recently got a couple of stop signs that flash, so we're looking throughout the city to where we can put these, and we're trying to see places that it's commonly violated. Another place that we're looking at, and we're proposing that we put it in, is 2175 South by George Wall and North Park. There's a stop sign right there, people are always shooting through it. We're just, we have a couple of them that we're going to be trying out, it looks like it's been fairly successful. So we'll be putting in the 2175 South here pretty quick, too. Like to report on the DRNG crossing at 6,000 has the footings for the flashers, for the crosswalks.
They're actually up.
So they went out today and put them up. So we're moving toward trying to facilitate those crossings. Ross has done an excellent job within his budget to meet those goals. We also have, we purchased two feedback signs. We talked about those a lot in the transportation plan meetings. Those two signs, we're going to be looking with the transportation plan and also with the police department to see where we could effectively use those. And so just because in the transportation plan, when we look to see the highest place of violations, we also want to limit accidents and things like that. So we're going to be looking at that pretty soon, but we have two of those signs. Also, I'd like to report that some of the speed humps that we're in, we really haven't had a whole lot of feedback other than people like them. So pretty soon, we're going to be doing studies to see how much it is reducing speeds. Today in the staff meeting, from the officers that are down there, they said it definitely works. I've been myself down there and seen that it obviously is working. They look a little bit more aggressive than they actually are, being bright yellow striped, but they surely slow down people. Also, a couple of weeks, about a week ago, maybe you got an email with the Roy Day schedule, kind of like to go over some of this, pass, maybe pass these along to the council members. There's a couple of things to kind of pay attention to, the art show judging for the council is 1:00 PM at the library on July 20th. Like to report, we are having the golf tournament, 7:00 AM on July 26th. This is actually full. We have the full amount of teams. We sent emails out trying to get people to sign up. This tournament, we have a lot of our vendors really supporting us on it, no cost to the city, all the fees are going to be paid for the golf tournament itself. We have a lot of good people stepping up and providing things.
I have a question about that. How come we're doing it in Riverdale and not at our golf course?
So that was the first question that we had in the Roy Days committee meeting. One of the biggest keys to a successful golf tournament is 18 holes, which we do not have.
It was asked of me, and I thought that, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, not being a golfer, I didn't know that either, but so that was one of my first questions.
It was discussed whether you do two rounds of the nine, or how it actually, you know, would work, and it, yeah.
That makes sense. I'm with Matt, I don't golf, so I...
Yeah, you have to get the whole 18-hole effect.
Makes sense.
Saturday, July 27th, we'll have the Mr. Roy Pageant at 7:00 PM at the high school. Wednesday, July 31st, will be the employee softball game from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. If anybody would like to join a team, we can have you guys join some teams if you'd like to play. Starting Thursday is when the big kickoff for Roy Days really starts, at Roy West Park, 5:00 to 9:00. Samovac following day at 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And then Saturday, of course, is the parade, starting at 9:00 o'clock. We just ask you to be there a little bit early so we could help facilitate the vehicles and stuff.
Matt, I asked about the fishing derby, that's going to happen on Saturday, July 27th.
The week before, yep. That was the old official kickoff to Roy Days, and now it's going to be the golf tournament.
But just so you know, it's still happening, it's just not...
Yes.
Yeah, it's, we just didn't need your participation, and I mean, you're willing to attend any of the events that are listed for Roy Days to be able to make a win with citizens and enjoy it.
Yep.
There was no judging of any size of fish that was caught coming out of the pond. Yeah, not from us.
So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got a couple of topics here, but let me just start off if we can. I'd like just to get any comments from the council, anything before we drop into the discussion, I'm assisted in the discussion. Council, do you have any comments, anything you'd like to share?
Can we share that the Chinese gourmet is coming down?
It just did. Open the mic.
Demolition permit has been approved, and the old Chinese gourmet will be coming down. Also, there's a sign up, don't know if you've seen it, but King's Buffet has announced that they're going to be filling the old Rite Aid building. And then we're in talks with a couple of other businesses looking at Roy. Mostly up on, well, all up on 1900, so anyway.
Okay. Good information, okay. Council, anything else you'd like to share?
No, I'm glad Matt brought up Roy Days, that was the only thing that I wanted to mention, and it's coming up, so...
Okay, let me just cover a couple of things before we jump into the keynote discussion. 17th August, Travis, we do have the service project Saturday morning, 17th of August?
I think it's the 24th, but...
Everything I'm reading from other sources says 17, so could you help us verify when that is?
I'll double check.
I've heard both ways too.
And as you all know, we typically will meet at the aquatic center and then spread out across the city with these youth groups, and then go ahead and provide some level of service, and the city opens up the aquatic center for the last time, I guess, on that day, so. Appreciate the information on the art judging, that's going to be obviously the 20th, we need to be part of that.
Just one thing, so then please arrive at the library at 4:00, that's just for the awards for them, right? Because I know we judge at 4:00 for the awards, for the participation. Okay.
Okay.
So we go at 1:00 to judge, and then the awards will be presented at 4:00 to those contestants that entered. If you want to be there for the awards, so I mean, that's at 4:00. But at least be there for one... But at least be there for one for the judging.
Okay. Good information. Okay. That's all I've got. Let's talk about then the assistive living discussion. We've got some information we need to share on that and we've heard already some testimony. I'd like to have this pretty open to the public. And so as we go through this conversation, let's just have input and hopefully we'll walk out of here with some resolutions. So with that, Matt, do you want to at least start what we know at this moment and then I'll add into that and we'll open to the council comments and to the public making input. Please.
Yeah. So following the meeting that we had with the residents down there with the assistive living facility, we're tasked with coming up with a way to move the dumpster and also a price of how much it would cost to build a masonry wall around the facility. Met with our engineering team, that's who did the projections. And with this being said, it's also their property that we had to get their permission to do anything as well. So prior, during our economic development meeting today, I stepped out and it was because the assistive living facility was getting back to me. They said that they would be unwilling to work with us to move that dumpster. They said where, where they were going to move it, it would interfere with their storm drain. That price would have been around $30,000 to move. And so they said, maybe if you guys could work with the easement in front of the building, we could possibly move it there. But we don't have prices for that. I can tell you it's going to be around $30,000, but you have drainage issues there as well. So if you go around that dumpster, there's a drain right in front of it and right on the side of it. The fence, they said, we would be willing to work with you. The fence will be about $150,000 for a six-foot fence. If you wanted anything higher, you would have to proportionate that money to the height of the fence, meaning that if you do an eight-foot fence, it would be $50,000 more because you would have to improve the foundation and, and everything on top. But with that being said, there would be limitations because of the retention wall down there, that if you were to build it so high, you would have to put it on the ground, thus having a 12-foot fence to facilitate the six-foot fence because of a four-foot retaining wall. Hope you follow me there though.
Thanks.
So about $150,000 for a six-foot fence. Our engineer suggests that they could put it on top if it was six-foot on top of that wall. But when talking to the assistive living facility today as well, they said they would be willing to work with us, but they would not want them to build it on their side of the fence. They would want the residents, meaning big pumps and things going over their houses and scaffolding and things like that, to be working through the yards. And so you'd have multiple landowners as well through the construction of that fence.
Okay. So the conclusion of that would be $140,000 of, to build a six-foot fence, masonry fence. It's 1,123 feet, I believe, from one end to the other end. $50,000, we want to raise that from six feet to eight feet. And then, but they were not receptive to our, the strategy of moving the dumpster location, flipping that wall and moving it out about 15 feet.
Correct. Currently, the dumpster looks like it's about two feet away from the property line. But as they indicated before, the fence is right there. So there's about two feet right there and then I think there's about a foot in between. So it's about three feet from property line. Ordinance states that it should be about 15, 15 feet?
20.
20 feet. 20 feet.
20.
So the dumpster, if you were to, it was about two feet from the side if you flipped that over, but that's right where the storm drain is. And that's what they were indicating.
So their position then would be is, is that if it was to be moved, they would only consider moving it further east.
Into, by the street, which they also had, but they would, they said they would have to look at it too because they're also worried about their parking. They're very limited with their parking.
Yeah. And that will take up some parking.
So I can't say that they would agree to it. I could say that they would look into it further.
Matt, let's go to the fence again. So are we talking cost or is that a cinder block fence or just a vinyl fence?
The vinyl fence is already up.
Right.
So there were some safety issues with the vinyl fence. So there's a six-foot vinyl fence over there. That is for, yes, indeed a cinder block fence.
But it would be the same height?
For six, for $150,000, yes, it would be the same height as another vinyl fence.
Another 50 and put it up to eight. From the ground up?
You would have to, in order to do from eight feet, we would have to change the ordinance as well because the ordinance limits us to six feet.
Right.
And that's six foot on top of the retaining wall already?
Correct. Oh, yes, sorry. Yes. So six foot would be 10 feet is the total.
Okay. And when you said that they would work with us and then you threw out a cost, can you kind of explain what that means?
That means that they are, they're saying that they would allow us to build that for them.
Oh, okay.
So, meaning that we would pay for it.
Okay.
And one other thing, and I appreciate the comment about the fence. During this process, shortly after we had a meeting with the public, Matt and I, there was already an effort and foot to take the four-foot vinyl fence down. The reason for that would be is because it's become pretty apparent that that was not going to be adequate at best. And so the movement was to go ahead and replace that with a six-foot vinyl fence. There was a discussion in our meeting that said, well, don't do that until we work this last piece because this piece need to be done. But here was the problem. If you'd have seen what was sitting out there, they had put these pillars, metal pillars all along there to attach that six-foot fence to, the four-foot fence to. And there was an incredible safety issue. Had there anybody fell, a child or somebody fell on those, and they're, they're pretty high, they're using those as stanchions support, we felt that there was, there would be a liability on the part of the city and definitely to developer, the property owner in terms of having to pay for that. In light of the fact the city have elected to go ahead and take the four-foot fence down. So we made a conscious decision that says, put the six-foot fence up. It was already being procured. Let's finish that and then let's work through this final phase. And that's what we did. It was not necessarily the right choice in terms of whether or not if we replace it or don't replace it, council, but it was the right choice in terms of the safety risk that we were facing had we done nothing waiting for this decision. And it was just too much, too much of a timeline between getting cost estimates, getting to the council and then basically coming up with a decision where we go from here. So that fence went up.
Who gave the contractor the okay to take the four-foot fence down?
I think there was a little bit of confusion because the contractor reached out to the subcontractor to get a price. And so when he did that, that subcontractor took that as replace the fence. And so the subcontractor took it upon himself to go take out that fence. So when, that's my, my understanding when I talked to the contractor themselves. And so he didn't know it was actually being taken down until I called him.
And then of course it left the, the metal standard sitting side of the cement just poking out, waiting for, okay, a, an accident to happen and we just could not let that set. And the material had already been gone. So that's what we know at this moment. Please, comments.
Hi. I just want to go on record and say that a six-foot fence, whatever it's made of, will not be sufficient. The height, it's just not going to work. It needs to be taller. So we'll need to factor that cost in. Please don't just build a six-foot mason fence because it won't be tall enough.
That would, that would require an ordinance change. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Right now we have an ordinance violation. So I don't see why an ordinance change is like a big deal.
Well, I appreciate that.
I can't be a county change without, I mean...
But to answer the question is, is that there is some ambiguity in terms of what the, what the policy states, but going through the current listing right now, there is nothing in the policy ordinance allows us to put an eight-foot masonry or otherwise fence in the city. We've got to change the ordinance. Now, you know, you're, you're the one that makes that decision. Let me make that clear. It is a, it's an ordinance change, but, but you cannot put a higher than a six-foot fence in Roy City today.
Yet. We cannot yet.
Okay. So we're not allowed, so we have to fix that piece.
And I believe we can do that.
Yes, we can.
Okay. My other concern is the dumpster's not near my property, but I'm confused. I'm just trying to figure out all this legal stuff. So I'm honestly just curious. It's three feet away from the property line and they're saying that they can't move it. But it's a violation right now. So I'm confused why it's allowed to stay just because it's a problem for them. Does that make sense? Because right now it's a violation and it's a problem for others. So I'm confused how that works.
Well, let's, okay, I'm not the expert here, but let's see if we can rationalize the thought process. The ordinance says it should have been 15, 20 feet away. It's not. Their concern right now, from what I think I just heard the city manager say, we were looking at an option to simply take down, what would be the cost to take it down on one side and use the one wall and build it on the other side? That would have got us probably at least 15 feet away and it may give us what we're looking for. Violation or not, it would have been a solution that may have been the least impactful. The challenge with that is by putting and shifting that now to the other location, which is what we were looking at, the cost is $30,000. It will sit on top of a storm drain. That in itself creates a problem because we can't build the wall on top of a storm drain. And so from what I understand. And so not only that, that it now creates another problem is, as an organization, they have to have so many parking spaces. It will take out parking spaces. So we're going to violate another policy.
Which sounds fine. Change, which one is violating?
Hence becomes the challenge of this conversation. Pick and choose which one.
I'm just trying to figure this out. I'm not angry.
I'm sensing, no, I'm sensing. But the conversation says they may, we haven't explored this, they may entertain allowing a complete rebuild of that dumpster facility at a different location where it does not impact the storm drains, but more than likely will still impact parking spaces. So they haven't agreed to that, but, but they, at least at this point says they will not support as a property owner to take it and put over top of a sewer or possibly losing parking spaces. So that puts us in a tough spot. Okay?
I think it puts them in a tough spot.
Maybe only from the standpoint is the city authorized it. And now do we have culpability and do they have culpability? We've got to work through this. There, there has to be a solution. Hence the reason why we're having this conversation. What is the right answer and how are we going to move from this? No matter what we do, there's a problem if we leave it as it is. So what are we going to fix that? Hence becomes the part of this conversation. Okay?
Thank you.
And we do have a problem. Okay.
And just to clarify, when we were looking at moving it, we were looking at taking it to 20 feet away from property.
20 feet. Okay.
I have a question. How much do we still hold from that project?
We still have bond form 80,000? I'd have to go look.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember what it is, but the bond for that is, would not be to do any of this work.
So we could go back and...
There's a contract for what it's formed and what it can be used for.
Oh. So even though all of these, all of these problems exist, we can't...
There's a drainage issue.
Really?
But, no, not for, not for the others, no.
Not for the bond?
Right.
No, for the garbage can, the site plan, it was, it was there, that location. And so when it was there, they built it there. And so we can't force them to move it.
So it was approved on the site plan out of code?
Correct.
Right.
Oh.
And so they put the money into it to build it and now they, they can't be forced to move it. But with the drainage, they are held to that standard of saying, no water can go on the next property. That's why we can withhold that bond from them.
So the only thing it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, we can force them to do is fix the draining issue. Everything else?
You got the drainage, we, we mentioned the air conditioner. They should be screening that. There's drainage issues on each side.
What'd they say about the air conditioner before you go on? Did they say they were going to screen them?
They, well, yeah, they, they said they were going to screen the, the generator. I believe that one's up.
That's done.
Yeah. And then the air conditioner, they were, on the site plan, it looked like it was on the ground and they put like a vertical one up. And so yes, some of those issues, they said they were going to fix. They said they were going to fix the lighting issue. They put a little thing up to divert that light. I went over to Cory Crossley's house. He left, oh, right there. And you could see that, you could see that piece right there on the light, but it didn't fix the issue. They put it up there during the day and at night it didn't fix it. So there are still things that they, they said they were going to fix, just like the drainage. Last time I was down there, they haven't even started on the drainage. They said they were going to fix it. That's on them.
Well, they, they just put it off behind their, that's their fix. Just throw some gravel and then go away.
Okay. I have, yeah, I haven't seen.
Nice. Halfway fixes are getting very frustrating.
Best thing we can do, Brayden, is just step up if you want to talk so we can get it on the recorder.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just a little frustrated with this whole thing. Brayden Standard, 5544 South, 37th and 50th West. Matt, Andy, I had the meeting with you. I covered all of my concerns. Today, they just dug a trench, threw some gravel down. I guess that's their resolution to the drainage issues. Still doesn't fix the fault where everything's coming off. Worse properties where that was a fill that went down into a hole. It was a natural retention pond for all of the drainage in our neighborhood and everybody has water issues and drainage issues now. So I'm a little concerned that we've given all the money back because when we had our meeting, it was 200,000. Now there's only 80,000 left. And there's, there's still a lot of issues. My biggest thing is, is just because the site plan was approved, culpability does not completely just fall back to the city because you guys approved the plan. There's, there's some responsibility there legally on the developers to ensure that the code is met. And so I, I struggle with that. But the fencing, that is not to the site plan. So if we want to take that argument and say, oh, well, we approved the site plan, well, that fence is not to site plan. The retaining wall is not to site plan. The site plan said that it would remove existing fence, that retaining wall and everything would be placed on the property lines and it would be replaced for every property to the west and south of the property. So they didn't meet the site plan and we're, we're still feeling obligated to, to fix some of those issues. I think that there's joint ownership in this. It's disheartening to hear that they say, we'll, we want to work with you, but then we're going to make it extremely hard for you guys to do the things you need to do. That's, that's frustrating because their first pitch to us was, we want to be great neighbors and, and, you know, we want to bring this to the community. We all welcomed it. Not one of us objected to what was going on. And now it's all just, well, sorry, you know, too bad. They said they're not going to move the garbage can. It's going to be really expensive to make it right, so. But Carla's right. Six-foot fixes my issue. If they put it on the highest elevation, which is what the code says, the highest elevation, they put their six-foot fence, my issues are fixed. You down to Carla and the Gonzalzas, you're going to be looking eight to 10 feet. I think an engineer needs to determine, because we didn't get our 10-foot space like we were supposed to, what is it going to take to give the privacy rights back to the citizens? And that's what's got to be determined. And I'm not an expert to go determine that, but we need to focus on what is the citizens' rights back? If we can't give them what the code says, how do we mitigate those and try to make it right? Because some of the things we can't, you can't go tear down the building and give them my 10-foot back. But we can mitigate it. There's tools there. How are we going to mitigate it? But it's, it's getting really frustrating because it's been brought up and it seems like the developers' fixes are just kind of halfway things. My, my fencing concerns, you know, they just close it off in the middle of fence and say, yep. Oh, by the way, they skimmed. It looks like it's a six-foot fence because it's a foot over the top of mine, but it's actually a five-foot fence because they built it up so far. So, from their end, it looks like it's a six-foot, but it's really only a five-foot fence that ties into my fence. They have code violations that aren't to the site plan that I think that they need to be held responsible for. And we need to decide which ones do they own and which ones do we own? Where did we make mistakes as a city? And how are we going to make this right for the citizens?
That's why we're here.
Because there's a lot of people that aren't here today that are really frustrated. They just, they don't want to come share their voice. And I, I don't know how we get there, but I don't think it's fair to say that all the onus is on the city because the site plan was approved. I think that the developer has a piece of this. And I think, you know, Andy, that's where, you know, you've got to come in and, and help us figure this out. But the code says twenty feet. It's got to be twenty feet.
Brayden, I appreciate the comment. Here's the piece of this discussion that has not been exposed. We can push to the level we can push, but it will go to court. And if it goes to court, then some district judge will make that decision for us. And if they make the decision, there's no appeal. I mean, you can appeal to the Supreme Court if that'd be the right answer, but it, but it's going to come out if it comes out in the court. If there's any way we can find a solution where the city council, the landowners, the developer can find some good ground, and we says, okay, we can work with that. I think we're there. Hence the reason why we're having this conversation now. But at any time, that developer basically says, see you in court, or any of you decide you're going to file a legal suit, all conversation stops. I'm not going to say another word. Nobody here better say another word. And then we'll deal with this issue in a legal manner. And it never comes out good for anybody. Andy, I apologize if I say that. But the fact of the matter is, it never comes out good for anybody if it goes to court. And so, I think for the first time, we've been trying to get the council engaged, let them know, but this is the first, no kidding, hearing. We're having a serious conversation about what we're going to do here. And I'd like to have this dialogue to figure out if we can solve this. If we can solve this, then we can walk under, says we've got a plan, let's make it happen. But if we can't, or any party in this simply says it ain't going to work, then the only natural solution would be is take this to court. And I'm going to do everything I can not to make that happen.
And I guess maybe that's, we've never had that joint conversation with the developer of what are they willing to? Because I'll tell you right now, our conversations with the developers, not what we just heard from Matt. And so, we're getting mixed signals. It's a different story depending on who you talk to. They act like moving the dumpster was, was very beautiful. It would just, they didn't want to pay for it. And we're willing to pay for it, and now they're saying, well, we don't want you to move it. I, I just think there's, I don't know. I don't know where the solution is, but it's...
We're going to try to find that. But if the answer to the question would be is, is that they will entertain, and we still have to approach that. They will entertain moving it somewhere else, twenty feet a minimum, and get that dumpster completely isolated so it's not part of this conversation. And it costs us, our joint effort, the city and the, and the developer, thirty thousand dollars, we may draw that conclusion and says, let's go do that. Let's go do that. That's easy. If the council agrees, let me make that clear, agrees, because the council has to make this decision because it's going to impact the budget. And if the council says, yep, do that, then we'll make that happen. Then that's off the table. We put it somewhere else, out in the street, wherever it has to go, it's going to be solved. Then we take on the next issue. But the real easy, easy issues in my opinion is that we've got to fix the lights. That should be fixed immediately. That is not, that should never be a problem, and there's equipment out there to detect that.
And we've asked several times to come do it at night. It doesn't make any sense to adjust them in the day and always increase daytime participation.
And technically, to be honest with you, if that light is bleeding over and violates code, then there's a, code enforcement should issue a fix a ticket to the whoever owns that facility now and simply says you're in violation. You've got thirty days to fix it. We can work those. Those are easy. Cameras, all I can tell you is, from what they told us, that was a state statute that says they had to have it. I would have preferred they have a different type of camera and not necessarily those kind of cameras up there where it only points one way. That's not what's there.
Like I say, my issues are not as severe as other people's.
Well, you've got a dumpster in your backyard, and you also got a six-foot fence, and it's vinyl. So, let's have a...
Actually, I don't have a fence. They never finished the fence.
They never finished all the way to the roof.
I just get a watch of people who mow the lawn, hang out in my backyard, put up a fence each one.
So, that's the question I have is, and it's been brought up. I mean, how much of this is on the city and how much of it's on the property owner? Because I mean, I, I can make a motion right now to spend two hundred thousand dollars of the city's money, but how much of that's the property owner? That's where we need legal to weigh in on it is...
Be more than happy to.
I, I'm up for it because, I mean, we're up against, you know, we're, we're having trouble, you know, funding a lot of things throughout the city. And here, you know, to take care of these good citizens, which I believe they ought to be, we're, we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars of the city budget to fix their problems. How much of that is the developer's problem?
Well, I'll tell you. This is the way it works. We've got, if you look at the code, and I've got some information here. Can you hear me okay?
If you get closer.
Maybe I need to... Excuse me, Matt.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Yeah, I've got to go to a meeting.
Okay, go ahead, Toby.
Because I've got to leave right after this. My name is Toby Gonzalez, and I live on fifty-six ten South and thirty-six hundred West. I'm also a neighbor to the senior center. I just want to make this comment. The city has put ourselves in a very difficult situation here. We all know that. Some of us actually began talking, I began talking to the mayor even before, even right after they started digging the hole. I've got a copy of the plans, and I know what the plans say. So, we got ourselves in a bad situation, and it's going to cost the city some money. What I recommend is that you come up with a solution. I don't think there's going to be a solution that's going to satisfy everybody completely. But we have to do the best we can. And unfortunately, it's going to cost a bunch of money, Paul. It's going to cost a bunch of money. What's even worse than that is it's going to cost the taxpayers. So, we've got ourselves in a really bad situation. What I, what I suggest you do is you come up with the best solution possible, even though it's not, there's no way it can be a perfect one. And none of us want to go to court. Reality is a bad thing. You don't want to get yourself into that. They have to come up with a solution that everybody can live with. Nobody's going to be perfectly happy with it, that everybody can live with. Thank you.
Good comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, initially, the contractor was looking at putting a six-foot fence along the property line there. And then I guess when they gone up to the site...
Close enough.
I'm sorry. It's hard from this angle, I think, trying to talk both ways. So, but I guess initially, the contractor at the site, when they were looking at things, they thought about putting that six-foot fence right along the property line. And then when they looked at that, they went, wait, we got a four-foot height over here. Six-foot means there's only two feet high. So, they'd be jumping over into your yards and thought that wasn't a good solution. So, when you go about a foot back, there was already this concrete, four-foot concrete wall. So, I guess there was a decision made that, let's put a four-foot vinyl fence on top of that. Now, we've got an eight-foot fence. So, on this side, instead of just having two feet, now we got four feet, and we've got eight feet on your side. So, I think that's the decision making. And if I'm wrong, I think that's where, what happened with the contractor initially. So, but, but let me, let me just go on with that. So, after they did that, that became a problem. I think that there were complaints about that. So, when you, when you look at the code, our code says that you have to have a six-foot opaque fence between those, that property line.
No.
Oh, okay, do you want to?
Well, so the, the site plan actually calls, so this is where...
But maybe if you guys, you know, I didn't, I, just, just hear me out, okay? Because when you guys talked, when I may have disagreed with something, I didn't express that at that time. So, it talks about an opaque fence being there. And then, when you look down, it says, an opaque wall shall be installed to coincide with the residential district boundary. And then where the ambiguity came up is then, when you read farther down in that code, it says it has to be stone, it says it shall be stone, brick, or colored masonry. But then, when you look at the other section where it talks about table of allowed screening, it says you have to have a minimum six-foot tall, solid, either wood, vinyl, chain, or decorative masonry. So, we have an ambiguity here. Now, I talked to the person who defends the city and who's the premier authority on land use issues in this state about, we've got this ambiguity problem. And he said, yes, you do. And the, the way that happens, the courts interpret it, if there's an ambiguity, they resolve that in favor of the property owner. In this case, the property owner would be the assisted living facility. So, they would look at, from that aspect. Now, I know there's been a question that's been raised is, well, in this part of the code, it says it shall be stone, brick, masonry. The other section doesn't say that. There's a, so, there's a state case that's on this, and it says, ordinarily, the use of shall in state statutes creates a mandatory condition eliminating any discretion on the part of the courts. And then it goes on to say, and this is Board of Education versus Sandy City, moreover, not only are statutes to be interpreted as a whole, we have a, oh, wait, let me go back a little bit. It says, however, the language of this section suggests that that presumption's not applicable. Moreover, not only are statutes to be interpreted as a whole, or morally, not only are statutes to be interpreted as a whole, we have a long recognize, we have long recognized that the context is an important consideration in statutory interpretation. Because context is important, the terms of the statute are being interpreted as a comprehensive whole and not in a piecemeal fashion. So, when you're looking at this ambiguity, they have to look at it as a whole and not just go, hey, we're stuck with shall here. So, that's the reason. If this other section didn't exist, I would agree with you on that.
The other section you refer to is the other zoning, though?
Yes.
The R, R three zoning, correct?
No, it is, it's the table, it's the, no, it deals with screening, yeah. And what we have, we have a residential use that's in a commercial zone. If you, if you look in our code, when it defines an assisted living facility, it's an allowable use, it's an, it's allowable residential use that's in a commercial zone. And here's the definition. Commonly referred to as residential, for assisted living facility, excuse me. Commonly referred to as residential care, assisted living, or personal care community. Next sentence, a residential facility. So, what we have is a residential use that's allowed in a commercial area. Now, you have that with group homes and other types of things too that can be allowed in a commercial zone. So, from a legal aspect, that's where it's at. And I have no bone to pick with any of you. I, I just want you to know. But that's my legal opinion, and it may not, you know, if we're talking about the fence, it may disagree with what you say. But I'm looking at what I know based on an expert, and I'm looking at what I've seen in case law interpreting now, how courts have interpreted. So, it may not, like I said, it may not be in line with what you think, but that's, that's my opinion on it.
But there is.
Is that because it's use versus, it's zoned, community, commercial, but the use is residential because it's an assisted living center?
Randy, Cory, come on up, you guys. I want, let's, let's work this out. We're going to talk this out, but let's not argue.
No, I don't want to argue, but I just, I just want to answer a couple of statements to what was just discussed. The site plan did not call for the four-foot and putting just the thing. The site plan actually talks about the retaining wall. It talks about the fence going on top of the retaining wall. That is in the site plan.
Right, but site plans can often be changed. You're not always stuck with the site plan. Code's going to overrule site plan too, on, on any occasion. But when you get into, when you get into a development, sometimes what's on paper doesn't fit what the situation is, and so people make changes.
So, I'm confused because your statement there's...
But if you, what I'm trying to say is, that's, that's my legal opinion on that. It leaves alternatives. Now, if you disagree with that, you know...
I'm just trying to, trying to understand because you just said that...
But you, show me where it says that you're stuck with the site plan.
Well, you're telling me that...
You know what, Cory, okay, you guys, I don't want you to argue.
Would you say, please say what I want to say? Because this is very important because...
Brayden, my fault.
That's the position that we're saying we can't hold the developer accountable to is because we approved the site plan, he doesn't have to follow the code because we approved it. Well, now you're telling me that the site plan doesn't really matter. Code is what matters.
If there's an ambiguity between the site plan and the code, that's where you could go. So, you know, I don't know, I know I'm not telling you what you want to hear.
But we also have code, ten, ten-two. So, if there's mixed zoning coming together, it says, where a lot of record, the time of passage falls within two or more zoning districts, the more restrictive zoning provisions shall be applied. So, even if they were mixed with residential and commercial, that would tell me I have to do the, the commercial side because it was zoned commercially.
Okay. So, all I'm saying is, we have an ambiguous, and now we have a third way of looking at it. And I know, please don't take it out, but I'm not the only one who has that same opinion. I'm concerned about it, and I think whenever there's a mistake or whatever, the city should be involved. And if we've done something wrong, we always want to make that correct. And so, that's why I go to who would defend us if we had any type of issue. So, that's what I brought. I know it's, you know, we disagree with it, but I don't know what else to tell you.
Brayden, let me ask you this question, okay? What will make this right for you?
That's what we're here to look at.
That's right.
There is fault. We have...
We need a whiteboard that says what's going to make everybody happy so we can start to...
And we have to compromise.
Brayden, tell us.
So, for me, you can't give me the ten, ten-foot easements.
That's right.
I would really like to not have to have a garbage can back in the corner where we enjoy all of our evenings. I, I want the fence, the very wall. I want the wall, wall.
Okay, six-foot, eight-foot?
For me, it's only, six-foot would work for me if they put it, if they put it at their elevation. Today, they backfill it two feet, and the guy mowing the lawn looks right into my yard. So, I would, I would want that complete.
You want the wall, and you want the garbage dumpster moved twenty feet away from the property line?
And I want, I guarantee that their solutions to the drainage don't cause issues for me in the future. Just dumping a bunch of rock behind me and using my fence as the retaining wall. I mean, it's still two feet, and they're still using my fence as the retention wall. So, they should finish the retention out and put the fence on top of the retention wall, and then I don't have any issues. Everybody else has a lot, a lot bigger issue. But for me, that solves all of my issues. I want the water, the fence taken out.
Okay.
Cory.
Cory, your thoughts?
Before I address that, can I go back to what Andy was talking about? And this is just, I'm trying to understand because the only way this development has ever been represented by anybody in the city is it's commercial. And now, we're talking about it as residential. It's zoned, commercial. When we had the planning commission meeting, seventeen point two was referred to, table of uses, which is a non-residential use. So, now to talk about it as residential, doesn't make any sense. It seems like a technicality, not very transparent. I'm having a hard time really understanding it. It's confusing to me, so... Don't, don't those things have to jive? It, assisted living centers can go in a residential zone if they're in seventeen point one, if they're R three or R four. This is not that. This is a commercial facility, period. It's not a residential facility. It's in a residential setting, but that doesn't matter because it's been zoned a certain way, and it's, and it's a permitted use. It's not even conditional. That's, that's the way, that's what they wanted, they got it, and the city suggested approving it. So, I think, I don't feel like that should be overlooked. If we're now talking about this as a residential facility, then we've got bigger problems, I think. So, anyway. Obviously, to, to us, it just appears like there is an ambiguity when it comes to, there is a residential zone, and there's a commercial zone intersecting. The whole point of having ten, ten, thirty-one is for situations like this. Now, the homes were there twenty-plus years. That was known when this build was proposed. Everything was talked about, like there would be buffers, there would be setbacks, there would be proper privacy, and everyone was for it. And now, we're in a situation where those, those things were put into play. I mean, if you go down ten, ten, thirty-one, nearly every single thing it calls for has been violated. And some of those things can't be resolved. Obviously, we've got hard surface right at the property line, running, I don't even, even know how many feet down, down that west property line. So...
Cory, is, is that where you're saying no pavement in ten-foot landscape zone, or is that...
Exactly.
I'm looking at your information.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, if we had that, then we're going to have less water problems. Water hits the hard surface, where is it going to go? Water hits the hard surface, where is it gonna go? There's not, there's not a full block wall. Right now, that fencing that's there doesn't even go to the ground, so that water's gonna come to us, easily stay on their side. So, it's, there's just a lot of things that the code anticipated, and if it would've been built to the code, we'd be great. I mean, for myself, I'm, I'm happy the facility's there. I want it to be successful. I want them to have a great business, provide good service to the community, but it's infringing on all of our rights, things that were supposedly in place to, to all keep us, you know, in pretty good graces with each other, and, so, we're, we're taking the brunt of how big the facility was. So, so I, I think we, we need to go down each of those codes and say, can this be resolved? And if not, how can it be mitigated? There's, if, if we can't get, you know, things like, if there is no landscape buffer, which many of the homes just have windows peering out into their backyard, can there be something done to help the citizens have some privacy back there? Whether it's a wall or some other allowance to, to, you know, create something that would, would help, so.
Well, I think your point's well taken. I think the conversation we have to have is, is, in your opinion, what will work? Because your comment is accurate. The policy says that there is a 10-foot landscape buffer between the properties. That got compensated a bit because the fire marshal came in and says, we gotta put a driveway right down that, that street, which now puts a road, a hard surface, okay, right up against the property line. There is no 10s feet there. And so, choices. Do we violate some state policy or state statute that says there has to be one because of public safety issues? That's not a, that's not a solution. Or do we basically say that, that, well, we just have to live with it? I, I'd like to go back and say from the beginning, maybe the 67-room department or facility should've been a 50-room, and then we wouldn't have this conversation.
Which was what, the, the initial information that we were given said 55, now it's 68, which is about 20% bigger.
So now we have a, we have a tough spot. We can't tear the building down, hard to go up there and say we can't have the road access. And so now we have to figure out what is the solution that will work. And I think, I heard Brayden say, fix me three things. Make sure I get no water off that landscape, make sure I don't, I get my privacy. He wants, he believes a masonry fence will do that, and he's saying is, is that, is that move the dumpster. So if, if, if his position would be is those are viable solutions to make him well, how close will that come if we, if it helps the other ones? Because remember, there's 12 other homes here we haven't even talked to yet, that, that may have a whole different opinion. And we haven't even talked to the landowner, who may simply says, you ain't gonna do any of that on my property, so.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, from my perspective, we, those things are our primary.
What about the line?
I'm not, I'm not asking for a taller fence on the code at the highest elevation, and it should be a screen wall, like, you know, like it's called for. Definitely the dumpster, need that moved.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from, from you Cory, and surely we want to have this dialogue, go with the masonry fence and move the dumpster.
I mean, for those of you that haven't been down there, that dumpster is right there, glaring in, in their face as they're standing out in their backyard.
Let's talk fence heights, you guys. Down this, up east, you know how high that is, okay? There's nothing wrong with that. Is that preferable to the 60? Because you're saying you're satisfied with the 60 masonry wall, but you're not really, because you want a height.
Well, I, I want it, I want it just where it is today, where that vinyl fence is today. Where it's built at that elevation, that's where the block wall needs to go.
Six foot?
Yeah, six foot.
It's sitting on top of the highest elevation.
It's 10 feet.
Just like the code calls for it.
So right now, the 10 feet is what's satisfying, or satisfactory, let's put it that way.
Well, it's, it's 10 feet because there's that retaining wall, which, you know, isn't a fence, it's, so if it sits on top of that-
So that's the other dilemma, if, if we put it on, if we put six foot on top of that, what do we do about the buffer zone? Because most of their fences, some of them don't continue on to-
Why was that not removed? Why were the, those fences, their property fence, just like they were talking about that, because I do remember where they were supposed to remove their fencing and put the, you know, put their fencing up. Why was that not completed? That left that buffer, that left that-
So that's kinda when I, it was back in February, Marches, March, around there. I, I went out there and met with those individuals with the assisted living facility, and we asked them to re, stated the, the site plan and told them to remove the fence.
Yeah.
It said it on the site plan, they're right, it says remove and replace the fence, and they simply just didn't do it. We were anticipating that they did it, and then we got calls, and they said they were putting up the fence. I can't, I can't answer the question why they did not choose to do it.
So can we hold them accountable for that?
Yeah. Yeah, can we? At least that-
And we've gotta get something from them. I mean, word of city trying to step up, but I think some of this is on them as well.
I get what you guys are saying, but from a legal standpoint, this is what any, I don't know, but this is what they'll say. The city's told the developer, you're okay. Ultimately, judge is gonna see that, since you guys signed off on this. They're not responsible anymore. So ultimately, we are back to us. We messed up along the way, our responsibility-
They're always responsible if they don't follow code.
Right. And so, according to the city, we told them that they followed the code. And I, that's where they're gonna come back on, say, hey, we're washing our hands of it, because we did what we were told. That's what I believe they're gonna say. So we are here to, let's figure this out for us and you, because we shorted you, we didn't do the proper things along the way. We rec, I recognize that, so the rest of these council. And like you said, it's our responsibility to make it right. So let's make it right, things that we can. Toby was great. I love Toby, he's my guy. But he's ultimately right also. We're not gonna peace everybody, but let's peace what we can. So-
Thank you.
That's our best collaborative agreement.
Yes. So let's go back to the fence. If we're gonna knock it down, we're knocking it down, push it back, get rid of that empty space.
Yeah.
Do you wanna put in it just how it says on the site plan, then a, just a six-foot fence right on the property?
No, I'm talking, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right as it should be.
I mean, you may not even mess with what's there, you might just come right to the property line and put a 10-foot fence.
Because that's what you want, that's what's satisfactory, correct?
Yeah, if, if we go to the site plan, unless this was changed after I saw it, it says install six-foot vinyl fence on top of wall. So, we gotta, we gotta carry that out where, where it's applicable everywhere.
Everywhere, I agree, it's not just here or there.
Isn't, is, behind your house now, is there a six-foot vinyl fence? I think the floor got removed.
There's mostly a six-foot fence.
Mostly. Doesn't quite finish.
So we get rid of the empty space, we put it 10 feet, since it was 10 foot, so your block wall on all properties over elevation, it might be changed or different, but we make sure-
Four foot was retaining wall, now it becomes a 10.
Cory, will that work for you, your opinion?
So, let me understand what you, so you said, you're gonna make it 10 feet because it's gonna be on top of the retaining wall, so it's 6 feet.
That's what it is, right? That's what it is right now. Are you satisfied with the height right now? That's the question. Satisfactory?
I am satisfied with that.
I, I think the further down you go, the, the height becomes a bigger issue. So it might be, it might be 6 feet for me, but it's gonna be 10 feet for me.
Can we keep it relative, as, as we go in the grade, we make sure that it is-
So my, my only concern-
It might like, look like that, but-
So I mean, ultimately, there's a, in my mind, there's a couple of solutions. You can, if it goes on top, you can close the little gap between the fences, remove our fence against the wall, and then it's, it's fixed, it's on top of the retaining wall, which is okay.
Yeah.
So that's probably the easiest, probably the preferred. If we just put a 10-
Just put it your backside, right?
If we just put a 10-foot in between, you still have the water issue, you still have the gap.
No, 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 no.
So I would say, leave that, if the engineer said it could go on top, and then we just have, some people have one, some people have chain link, some people have vinyl, but it's a, a six-inch space or a foot space to close.
We take that.
That would work.
I mean, if they can continue the fences all the way to the wall. Now, that wall's not a straight cement wall, it, it's decorative, but-
If it closes off at my property line, and then the chain link and that goes up next to it, I don't think, no one's gonna crawl through there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, if we butt up to that, it's not a perfect fit, because that is a decorative wall, stamped wall.
You have to make sure on my property line that it rounds that corner and ties in on 5600.
Yeah, I know where you're going.
If you close that off properly, then it wouldn't be an issue. So I think for Cory and I, on top of it, six foot fixes our issue, and then it's gonna have to get bigger as you go.
Jimmy, please, let's have your input to this.
Uh, yeah, so by the time it gets to my property, I mean, right now, we've got the six foot, and the HVAC is still up above that, so we've got that issue. And then about, towards like 10 feet, there's about 10 feet on the south side of my property, where the fence actually drops a couple of feet. So it goes like this, and then cuts down and keeps going. And so, that, it looks terrible anyway, but it really, it really probably needs to be eight feet-ish on top of our, from the top of the retaining wall at our point, just because of the way it leans down, because of, just because of the way the angles work from the roof.
You're gonna wanna taper transition, because you don't want the step-
Yeah, it's like a wall, and, uh, it looks really weird.
Will that wall down towards her house hold an eight foot?
I can't say that it would hold an eight foot.
Well, it disappears, the wall ends halfway.
We have a four foot, and then a two foot, and then the two foot, it's only decorative for about a foot, and then a straight concrete, like a foot on top, so it like goes decorative, and then cuts in a couple inches.
Yeah, I haven't seen it near, I've seen it in your backyard, but I haven't seen her-
Yeah, okay. Which one's Jenny's?
Um-
She's, she's the-
They gave us the site plan.
So I was five, five, seven, four.
Her house is right there, right here, that's where the step comes down.
Oh, okay, got it.
Then just related to the water issues and the dumpster, so we're saying that they won't move the dumpster because it's going on top of a drain, but we already know we have major drainage issues that they need to fix. So what? I'm not seeing why that, like, if you're already having to fix your drainage, and we're saying we can't fix this other major problem because it's gonna cover the drainage that we already need to change?
Well, I, I, this, let me just make, make it clear. You put an eight-foot masonry fence, it's gotta go deep. You've got to be able to support that.
Yeah.
You're gonna have foundation and footings under it.
You've got to put footings under it, it's gotta be engineered. This is no light effort, and, and to suggest is it'll sneak under, under the masonry fence, if that's what's agreed here, it will not. It'll have to go under the ground to pop up on your side, but the fact of the matter is, is it, is it won't just permeate through the bottom, because it's gotta be put on footings. Hence the reason-
Well, I thought about just the dumpster permission, but-
So, so I just, just so we understand, this is, this is a complicated process, but it's doable. But what I'm trying to get to here is this, I'm sensing at least from four of you, I'm trying to get four landowners here-
I mean, I think we need to approach everybody.
They're basically saying, let's put a masonry wall, move the disposal, we can debate about the height, but eight feet seems to be about reasonable. If eight-feet concrete wall is placed 1123 feet, that needs to go around that facility, we can solve most of this problem. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
I thought we were at 10.
Well, 10, it would be-
And 10 feet maybe will be what it has to be.
It would be, I guess, for my plan, it would be eight feet.
We have six plus four is 10 in their backyard, but what is it, I mean, that's the thing is the-
If you place it on top, our side will only be six. If you go on top-
We're talking, we're adding on top, we need like eight.
Yeah, if we go on top, so you have a six foot, and then you have the four-foot retaining wall there, so it's 10 foot from the ground up.
So it's like 12ish.
And they put the six-foot fence on top of that retaining, on that top of that-
I, I think we need to get every property owner in here, because if we come up with a resolution that, the people that are present, that somebody else comes in after the fact.
We've, we've talked to most of them, the retaining wall only exists-
Well, you guys were rational with talk to when I was there, the, the neighbor that's got his house for sale, I mean, what's his take on this?
Okay. I'm not sure you can answer that, Bill. Let me just make sure, because here's my concern.
I already said, build the wall.
We don't know at this moment what, now, we have some, we have to ask questions. And let me make this clear. If the property owner we're talking about, who owns that retaining wall, says, it ain't gonna happen on my property, let me repeat this, then the only way this can happen would be is on your property. Let me make that clear. The only way this will happen is on your property, if the owner of that property says, it ain't gonna, I'm not gonna do this. And he's already said, I will not basically allow you to put cement trucks on my property line. So to make this work on a cement wall, you've got to put a pumper on the street and pump over the top of the house, it's done all the time, and they will have to put that cement on from your-
Do you do cement wall, or do you do a block wall?
There's still cement involved.
You would have to do a substantial foundation, that's where the cement comes into place, and then you would have to bring construction workers through.
I, I get it, I just wanna make sure they understand that it's not a cement wall 10 feet tall, but it's, you've got footings, foundation.
There'll be footings, there'll be a variety of things that have to happen, so there's some, there's more work that has to be done. But at least council, we're in a position to understand is, at least what we've heard from, I would say almost 50% of the residents, this is what they're saying. Masonry wall, move the dumpster, okay?
And the lighting, right?
Lighting in the cam, lighting in the cameras.
The lighting, we can address, we'll just call and complain every time they don't respect us.
Okay. The reason why is because we got more work to do here. We have not bridged this issue with the property owner. We haven't bridged this. And remember, the last conversation Matt said he had with me is, they're not receptive to simply put that 15, 20 feet away on top of a, on top of a, of a storm drain. So we have to go back and look at this option. And oh, by the way, they're required by same ordinance is to have so many parking spots. They can't put that dumpster on the front of their property without compromising parking spots. So we're gonna violate one ordinance to make it comply with another ordinance. So we got some things we've gotta do here to work this out. I don't think, council, we can come to an answer tonight. I think we got some good input, but we've got, the city has to come in with some more information, we gotta look at some costs, we gotta ask the hard questions, and we need to reconvene a discussion. Are you okay with that, council?
I, I guess I have one more question.
Please.
It's on the financial side of it. Can any of this be risk managed?
Through insure, through insurance?
No. I know it's a stretch, but I'm willing to say, I know, we'll get the money from somewhere, but I'm even saying, let's try to dwell into some hardy, if possible. It is an inch away in from the west, technically, if you wanna run that route. It might be a stretch, but it's-
We can ask the professionals, it's not obviously in a zone, but we can ask the professionals.
Right, but still, you could borrow from, there's some uniqueness we could maybe do, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so since we've got some discussion on the fencing, can you look, have our engineers like, you've got the notes, right, of kind of what we're talking to maybe fix this? Are we all over the place?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, from what I'm thinking out of it, it's six foot.
Brayden thought you've got, you've had the best plan for the fencing, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think that's the easiest.
So, I mean, if, yes, and I agree. So if we could-
Just with them knowing that the construction will probably be on their side coming through.
On the homeowner's side.
According to the-
Which I'd like to have further discussion on.
Right.
Yeah.[1712.12]
That's not being...
That was the, I mean, but I would like to, I mean, we need to get our engineers kind of involved because, you know, on that.
Yeah, they went out, and I have a price quote for what they said would be a 6-foot wall with the masonry footing. The wall would be around, it depends on the type of block too. So, if you go with the cheap block that's down there around the 711, that's a lot cheaper than the wall that would be around their current dumpster facility. You're talking probably a third more money for that dumpster facility.
Okay, one question. The developer is not willing to come and sit with...
They ought to be here with us right now.
I could ask them again to come here with council staff.
Okay, so, I mean, this is the same, I mean, we had a work session, Colleen's circles, same neighborhood, okay? It worked well? I, yeah, I'm hitting the pattern here. Anyway, not anything against you. I'm like, I don't know why, anyway.
You know what, council, I mean...
So, we do that again? Do we have that, if we're, if we reach out to the developer and he's willing, if we come with some options, can we do that type of setting again to be able to...
I think we're doing that right now.
I know we are.
But here's why...
But I feel like there's got to be another meeting.
Give direction on the fence, I think we're good that way. I think everybody's here happy with that. Yes, there's constants involved, that makes the neighbors happy for the fence. The other big one is the dumpster.
I understand.
It's a fair stand. We might have to violate pardon ordinances. I'm okay with that.
That one I'm okay with.
We ought to violate ordinance in the first place.
That one I'm okay with.
So if we take away a couple of parking spots to move the dumpster, let's go that direction.
And I would think, they don't tie the bags, they don't keep the lids closed, and every time they...
No, I mean, that's the first thing you walk in your backyard, that's the glaring thing.
So, that needs to be solved by moving it, to get rid of a couple of parking stalls, so it'll be...
Okay, so, and here's, here's the key. We've got to do this in a public meeting. If there's a decision that's made, then it has to be ratified by the council in a public setting, at the city council meeting. We can have all the workshops we want and talk, but when it comes down to simply making a final decision, this council has to do it in this meeting. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
And so, we got a lot of good input. Matt, we can work this, we'll see what our next steps are going to be, and we'll figure out what we can do here.
Let me kind of go over some of the key points of what is the direction that you guys want to give staff. So, we're going to go look out, we're going to talk to the landowner down there, the assisted living facility, and talk to him about a 6-foot masonry fence on top of the retaining wall on their property. They have to agree to that. We can look at different ways to move that dumpster. The current solution that we came up with, they told me that they were not going to allow that today. But in order to facilitate moving that, we would have to get their permission.
Right.
And I'll have the, the engineers already went out there and looked at it, but we have to get their permission as well as to what we do with that fence. I got a little bit of a verbal agreement with them that they would work with us, but then they did say that it would have to be on, the construction aspect would be on the homeowners. So with that being said, I would need to reach out to the 13 homeowners and make sure we can facilitate that through their houses. And then after that, we're going to have to do a public hearing on a budget adjustment and find a place that we would need to take the funds from, once we get a better, we got a good estimate, but we need to come up with what type of block we have to come up with. Kind of the strategy of going forward.
Yeah. Okay. Are we okay with all this? This is, this is complex, but it really has to be handled this way to make this right, because we're going to, if this council takes out $250,000 of taxpayers' money, they're going to give up some. There's something in this city that's not going to get funded, and they're going to have to make a priority choice here. That's no choice, okay? If they make that decision. So, I'd love to say to you, the fact is, is that let's hang this on that contractor. That would be the easiest thing to say, but I'll be blunt with you, and you'll know this better than I do. Put this in court, okay? If I was, at least my limited experience this week, they wouldn't, they wouldn't touch us with a 10-foot pole. They'll simply say, "It's not my problem, city, you own it." And that's why we're having this conversation, okay? So let us flush this out, we'll flush out the numbers, we'll get an idea, and let's see if in fact we got something the council will approve. But the council has to approve this. And in council, it's not just approving it. You've got to look and say, "What are we going to give up?" Because that's exactly what has to happen here.
Go look at the budget.
It's in the budget. You find it in the budget.
It's not, I mean, yes, you could take something, but in reality, this is the point of reserve fund balance for this type of situations.
It can go from the reserve balance, but it'll drop it from the 18%, it'll drop it down a bit.
Just fine, state allows, state law allows us to drop it down to 5%.
We dropped, we dropped it.
We're okay.
Well, and what council and Corey pointed out, and I agree, we got a lot in RDA if we can figure out how to spend that.
It's probably the most restricted money in the city. It's pretty rough.
I know, I'm just saying.
He's getting creative.
Creatives one, but a buffer in legal is another.
Oh, well, yeah. I want it to be a buffer.
It's a stretch, but it's, it's a stretch.
I know this meeting's being recorded, so...
Why'd you say that twice?
So I'll just get off the stage with one last thing.
Please.
I really just want to have that meeting with the developer, to where we have the agreed-upon solutions amongst all parties, so that there's no more of this back and forth and the guessing, you know? And then just coming and putting up a little piece of fence here, and a little bit of gravel there, and let's get to the real solutions and have that meeting and get this off the plate. Because it's infringing.
I agree with that, but I'll be blunt with you. If I was that developer, I wouldn't walk into this room, I would walk in and talk to you without my lawyers.
I was just going to say...
We've already asked to, to talk together. I've already made that comment to them. And they said, "I would rather you talk to the citizens and you talk to us." That's what they requested.
I'm with the mayor, I don't think you're going to get them to show up.
Well, bring their attorney. We just want to have a conversation of what are you willing to work with?
Let's see, what I don't know...
We can suggest, but I don't know that we can force them to show up.
The council may basically say to you is, is that...
No, I agree.
Because if the council simply says, "Is it, we'll pay for it," so why would you have to worry?
Well, but we have to talk with them on, can we do it on their property? Can we move your thing?
We're going just back and forth.
That's what Matt, that's what Matt and I are going to have to do. We sit down with them, we'll simply says, "Okay, here's some ideas and work it." If they agree with it, then we're doing it. But I'll tell you what, that fence comes down if they agree, which means their mount, or that's that 4-foot mount they got on the west side over there, we're talking about putting a masonry fence on top of that? I don't think they're going to buy that. I'll tell you what I think they'll buy. They'll allow us to put a fence, a masonry fence, on the solid ground below that, which means it goes to 10 feet. That's what they're going to say. And you just leave our fence as is. I think that's what they're going to say. They already told us, is, "You ain't cutting any ground, okay, on our side of the fence." You're not cutting any ground. You want this fence go up? What you have to do is convince every one of those 13 property owners on their fence to basically put the fence in. And that means we pump the cement over the top of your house and put it in there. It's done all the time, but that's what they're saying, which means the heavy equipment to build the trench is going to happen on your side of the fence. I'm just being a realist, okay?
But if Brayden is asking for that, there's no, there's no thing in saying we can't ask for that.
No, I can be asking.